Okay, it is 4:30 on Tuesday, May 14th. And our council meeting today is going to start with a work session. We do have a quorum with four of us here. I'm expecting Councilmember Jones any moment. And Councilmember Rogers is having to close her shop to get away. She had said she'd be 10, 15 minutes late. So I know she'll be joining us as well. So for the community to know if this is a workshop, in normal workshop fashion and in our, as we've set a precedent, we're receiving a lot of information. This is information that council has not seen before or been privy to. So we don't take questions from the public because we're all hearing it for the first time. So if you are at home, don't think you need to rush down because we aren't going to be taking comments from the public. So you can watch from home and you'll be completely fine. So we'll have the work session. We'll start at 4:30. We believe that it will run to 6 o'clock. At 6 o'clock, we will go into recess so that we can rearrange the room. And we'll be on the dais and we will start our normal meeting at 6:30. Councilmember Ennis.
The public will have a chance to have input later in the month, right?
Absolutely. We're not voting on anything. It's just a work session. It's just to get information. Once this information is given to us, it's public and we'll have input later.
Great, thanks.
So since we have a quorum, we're called to order at 4:30 and we will start with work session. Item 2A, Discussion on Bastrop Building Block Codes with Matt Lewis.
Mayor and Council, at the last workshop, we spent time talking about character districts. And we had some conversations about the character district that we've called Lost Pines. And if you remember, there are two geographically sensitive features about Lost Pines. The first is the Houston Toad and the second is the Lobbolly Pine. And we indicated to you at that time that we had not spent much time on that particular character district because we knew there were some overriding federal regulations that superseded anything we would do. And indicated that we were going to sit down with Carrie Croft, who was affectionately known as the Toad Lady of the County. And so we had lunch with Carrie and she spent two hours educating us and it was exciting. It was exciting because it really opened our eyes to some options that really had not, I guess, entered my mind relative to how calculations are code. You know, we hear the figure an acre, that you can only develop an acre. And so that's an acre of disturbed property. Anything on wheels doesn't count. Pier and beam, all that counts is the pier in the ground. So think about beach housing. And I do that to help you understand that when you drive along the beach, you just see 12 piers or 14 piers. So it's the circumference of the pier of that beach house that would count against that acre. The RVs, mobile homes, tiny houses, we've often wondered how would we address tiny houses? Those are all things that don't count against that acre. So one of the things that Matt and his team have done is incorporate mobile homes and RV parks as building types. So one of the policy decisions y'all will be asked to make, and this is one of those policy conversations that probably would be a great thing for Planning and Zoning Commission to vote, is with that as a building type, in what character zones would they go and how much of that would be allowed?
One question on the tiny homes, that would only be if they were mounted on a trailer, right? Because if they're on a slab, the full slab counts.
That's exactly right.
So we just wanted to clarify.
But a lot of tiny homes are on wheels, which is why they don't typically get financed in a conventional manner. And so it was just really eye-opening about how that might work. Now, there are some subdivisions in her mind that depending on the amount and how the utilities would load out, but additional permitting could be sought. It's not something she's done much of, but it was exciting. So we've had some internal conversations. I know Matt and his team is cheering on this, but I did want to circle back and tell you, we did follow up with Carrie. We're excited about what that presents to us. And because we appreciate how significant this area is in its geography, how RV parks, mobile homes, tiny homes are laid out is supremely important. And so this is an opportunity for workforce housing to occur in some challenging topography, where it may not be appropriate to build an entire house. You could use the topography laid out in a way that that might be an option. So just wanted to follow up and kick that off as I transition to Matt and tell you that we did follow up, did what we said, and it was exciting.
I may be premature, but I wanted to ask you, just skirting around the mobile home or around the stilted house figuring into the equation?
That is going to be something that Melissa often matter when it cover, and that's a development requirement, not necessarily a calculation from the Toad Lady and how the habitat's calculated.
Great, thank you.
I think his point is if you're counting the cylinder of a pier, do you then have to count the width and the length of the skirting and contribute that to the area?
If it is mounted, it doesn't touch the ground, no matter. So you could leave, you know, just a little bit of space from the ground and as long as it's not disturbing and the toad could hop underneath it, they don't count.
Disturbance of soil is the disturbance. Disturbance of the soil would be the disturbance. So if it's elevated and there's no disturbance under their definition. Sir. Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Matt Lewis with Simple City Design. We're really excited to introduce you all to the first few samples of the Pattern Book. The Pattern Book is not just about regulations, but it's about inspiration and information and regulations. And so it is written to be in harmony with the B-3 codes. The B-3 codes are very light in the regulatory structure and what they do regulate to achieve the fiscal sustainability, the walkability and the geographic sense of nature which the council sought. The general outline of the Pattern Book, this is not in the outline that would be presented. This was just a series of pages that got put together as a collection. So these are not in any type of order at this point, just so you know. The general outline of the Pattern Book will be the development philosophy, the individual development types, one of which would be the conservation subdivisions, as Mrs. Humble was stating regarding the toad habitat. They really felt that that type of development would be appropriate in that area. They'd like to see more developments like that. They have not seen many submissions of that type of development. And so therefore, we're coding them in so that they would be an allowable development type, a development pattern, and we'll make it suitable to the regulations that are up there. My mic just ended. Oh, no, it's still on.
Can you just outline that? Because I was just a few minutes late. It sounds like I missed a lot, so.
Sure. We're recapping the meeting that we had with the county. They have the Federal Endangered Species Act that governs the Lost Pines District. We met with the representative from the county and talked about the regulations. In order to achieve the regulations, we've come up with several options to solve those issues, one of which was conservation subdivisions. They really are excited to see those types of neighborhoods. And what we're doing is we're writing development regulations that would meet their standards around that type of development pattern so that there would be another housing option or another development pattern that would be allowed in Bastrop.
So are you going to make that a place type?
It would be a development type. And within that development type, we'd have several place types within it.
How many other development types do we have?
Three. There's three total. Traditional neighborhood development, which would follow the grid, and that would again be informed by the geography. We're working on the thoroughfare master plan right now to lay those out based off of geographic constraints. You're aware of that. And the next would be village development. Those are intense developments where you'd see a little village. And they may not have detached housings, or maybe there's minimal amount of detached housing, but mostly mixed-use little centers with pedestrian streets and parkings handled on the peripheral of the neighborhood. And then the next would be clustered land development or conservation neighborhoods. And those are where you cluster the houses tight to provide, keep majority of the open space, which is a development pattern that would be suitable for that area.
Okay, so I'm just trying to make them fit into the hierarchy because we've been talking about character districts and place types and street types, and now you're talking about...
Development patterns. And the development patterns are optional in particular areas. I will get into this.
Okay.
And it is part of the philosophy of the Pattern Book. We did introduce these development patterns.
Let me say, I understand, but the idea that we were adding a third one and the traditional village and conservation, that's not something that we've talked about when we went through the building block code book.
We talked about traditional neighborhood and we talked about village, but we've never talked about the conservation district. You're absolutely right.
Well, except that we had discussions with those three back with Dave Gaddis on the subdivision ordinance. But when we were talking about the character districts, we didn't say this character district would only be allowed traditional, or this one would have traditional and something else. So I'm just trying to put the building blocks together.
Sure, yes, ma'am. And the intent is that traditional neighborhood development pattern would go where the grid would be allowed and where it's not interrupted, or even where it is interrupted, you would shift the grid and change characteristics. The conservation land development would be for certain areas. So what we would like to do is see how the master transportation plan maps out, and then we would like to bring that to council for policy direction on those development patterns.
And assign them to a character district ultimately?
They would be allowed in the particular character district.
The conservation subdivision, in my opinion, would only go in the Lost Pines area. One of the things that we learned is if you have an acre, and say for instance, you buy, I think it's three to five acres, if you have three acres, you can develop a half an acre. If you buy five or more, you can develop an acre. When you ride out in the toad habitat, you will see some home sites that have signs, particularly on their fence, that say, "I am a Houston Toad Conservation District." I participate in that. And by doing that, you pledge to leave most of your property in a very natural state. Piles of limbs that would be conducive to toads. And by doing that, you get the equivalent of an agricultural exemption on your taxes. And I don't think that that would be something we'd want to see in a traditional neighborhood from a code enforcement standpoint, which is why I'm raising this, that that distinction would probably only be appropriate in the Lost Pines neighborhood where the toad district dictates. Because by doing that, that allows for some additional tax exemption, but it would be in a very unnatural code enforcement would have them come apart at the road if they saw that. So it's not something we'd necessarily want in the middle of town, so.
But he said conservation or cluster, and we've had proposals of cluster housing along the Colorado River where it made sense to try to leave the bank alone. So that we may have to make a distinction between...
Which is what I'm trying to do with the conservation. It was a federal designation that's permanent with that property. And when you get it, you don't get to disturb it.
So if cluster is similar to it, we may end up needing to have four types?
Yes, ma'am. We may have four development patterns based off of that.
Okay.
So again, the general outline of the Pattern Book will be the development philosophies, the development types, which is what we're talking about currently, the place types and how they fit within them, the character districts, the blocks, the intent with neighborhood design, as well as building types, civic space and landscape designing, how the public realm, the streets interrelate to the buildings. And while we appreciate you all just received these pages today, so we just want to introduce you to the concepts so that you all have the context as well as the philosophy of how the Pattern Book is developing to ensure that we're on the right track. That's the intent tonight. So we'd like to introduce you to some of the key components of the Pattern Book and how they would correspond back to the B-3 code.
All of these pages have been uploaded in Dropbox in the May 14th council folder in a folder called Pattern Book.
Can we also put it in the building Bastrop folder?
Sure.
It'd be helpful because it'll be hard to remember which council meeting this was. The building Bastrop would be helpful as well.
The Pattern Book is used to create harmony around the architecture and furthermore is to draw attention to how the built and natural environment come together and how these key characteristics that are outlined within the Pattern Book are important to support the B-3 framework. And so on the first page here, you have the, and I would like to note that these are still in draft form, very draft form, preliminary. We're still coordinating how the code and the Pattern Book will match up. There may be some conflicts still identified in here, but these are in very preliminary draft form at this point. But you'll have your development philosophy promoting the intended physical outcome of the development patterns and the intent of why the Pattern Book would be important. And then the tools associated with the Pattern Book and the code, the place types, the blocks and the streets. But all of these elements are elements that create human settlements. And the human settlement patterns within these, we're trying to create options and give the development community ideas to inspire thought rather than regulate all the time. So a lot of this is just inspiration. For example, these block types, they're inspirational block types. They're not required, but they are, would be allowed for and encouraged. So as we go through this, the next page, you'll see that we'll start to introduce the primary architectural styles. And these are the styles that are prevalent within central Texas, predominantly in Bastrop and this area of town. Yes, sir.
Have you forced, there are more styles than this here in town. Have you forced them into, I mean, like you have craftsmen, there's prairie style and there's four-square. Are you forcing those particular designs into craftsmen? Or are you going to elaborate on these?
If I may answer that, I think we'll have another page that does deal with the minor architectural styles.
You call minor, you call prairie style and...
Prairie style and colonial and which one was the third one you mentioned?
Four-square.
Four-square, yes. There are some houses present, and I think it's mentioned in, maybe on that page. And I apologize because these are totally out of sequence.
They're out of sequence.
Exactly, in terms of from the macro to the micro, that's what the book, that's how the book is going to be organized. We start with the overall design philosophy and then we go into development pattern or development types that fit into the character zones. Then we go into the place types, describe every one of them, what goes in, so that page is missing.
So Melissa, the question is, are they going to be included? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's one other, can we move the Elgin City Hall out of your pictures here and put one of our grand Victorians in? The red brick is the Elgin City Hall.
Yes, sir.
We have some incredible Victorians.
Yes, sir. That's helpful, absolutely.
I think they're everywhere. The reason that was in there because I was trying to base this on the whole county and not just on one city.
Yeah, we pretty much like to focus on Bastrop. We pretty much like to focus on Bastrop. So I think that's your point.
Well, I'm also sensitive to it because when you call up the city of Bastrop on Google, the Elgin City Hall goes bloop right there in front of you. And so I see it a lot.
That's great. We'll swap that picture out. Yes, sir.
Duly noted.
Are there any other architectural styles that are not in mention that you would like to see added or addressed? And you're the historian here, and so we really do, we'd love to...
But all eyes on you, Mr. Ennis. This is your bailiwick.
I'll send you some.
Okay, yes, sir. That'd be great. We'd love to sit down and go over this review as well.
Well, I guess under the minor design, you would have some more of the newer, like neoclassical designs, I guess, that they have out in Hunter's Crossing and Riverside Grove. Would you, I mean, it seems like that you would want to dedicate something to the newer derivative designs.
We do have modern architecture and contemporary architecture pages done.
Okay.
I mean, this is an interesting discussion for the reasons of how we build our neighborhoods. In other words, most of the neighborhoods are built by the tract home builders. Now, if we set these styles up and we say, okay, if you want to build, you can build in any style that has its own self-contained consistency, that reacts well to the, has a good relationship within itself and to the other buildings and to the public realm. Styles usually come into play in private sector developments where they have a very stringent review process. And when you come, you know, every time you present a house for construction or for approval, it goes through some sort of review and approval. It's either the design review committee or the town architect. So one of our challenges is to figure out if we specify all of these styles, who's going to build in these styles? And then how we work with the tract home builders to really make this work. What I've seen people do in other places is they select, they pre-select architects and builders that are approved for working in a certain, on a certain project or in a certain city. And I think we may have to go through that. So anyway, that's an open question for discussion that I don't have the answer to.
The intent is to introduce these patterns to people that are coming to build so that you have characteristics that create identifiable structures and the key elements that would create and generate a craftsman's house that's identifiable as a craftsman's house, where you're not getting Frankenstein buildings, where you have five different architectural styles all morphed into one architectural style. That was, that's the, you know, is to allow for that.
Okay, but Matt, specifically to Deborah's question about the neoclassical and out at Hunter's Crossing and Riverside Grove, I recall the conversation the last time we talked about the Pattern Book. If I, my house burns down and I don't want to build a craftsman's house in the middle of Hunter's Crossing, and I'd like to know that the neighborhood I live in is allowed to be and there's a Pattern Book for that. So whether it's limited to certain areas, we know for a fact that these, the pages that we're looking at is not likely to be built in the middle of Hunter's Crossing or Riverside Grove. And they are great neighborhoods within our community, and so we have to, we need to have a way of having that allowed.
Let me explain and apologize. We started our last discussion at the last meeting from the tail end, which we shouldn't have. I think the selection of architectural styles is one of the last things the Pattern Book actually does. There are a lot of other things. And there are six or seven pages on architectural, on a single home, architectural standards, single-family home standards. And they have to do with the massing, with the roof type, with the colors, with articulations on the street, with primary facade, with materials and all of that. So we're not mandating or asking everybody to build a house in one of these styles. They are certainly welcome, and if they do, we have certain regulations. You cannot indiscriminately borrow from one style to the other because it muddles the expression. It doesn't, it's not really clear what it does. And whatever somebody decides to do has to be consistent within itself and answer some of those standards. So you can build any type of house as long as it answers those standards. That's the answer.
So I'm not sure we've answered the statement or the question. So we could add some pages that acknowledge Hunter's Crossing and Riverside Grove, so when they come to the meeting and they flip through the Pattern Book, they find themselves there. Correct?
Well, neoclassical style...
But the answer needs to be yes.
The neoclassical is already in.
We already have a classical.
Yeah, we have it addressed in a page. There's a neoclassical page that would address that.
So we'll see houses from Hunter's Crossing and Riverside Grove on those pages?
If they represent an acceptable image for that particular style. Because they may be, they may be muddled, they may not be, although there are a lot of hybrid houses in this city, and I think we may have them actually mentioned on the minor style pages.
So at the last conversation, I believe I thought I heard a potential solution to the issue with the tract builders. And that is, everybody already has house plans that they're comfortable building. And you mentioned that there could be three or four elements from these styles that could be adopted on the exterior that has in no way going to change the footprint or really substantively cause the home builders great pain. It's just external facade changes. And how they get built inside, as far as they're concerned, it's the same product, same price, same whatever. Is that still something y'all are going to work through so when we get what we would consider a tract builder to come to Bastrop, it's not going to be a big deal to get that through the committee or the town architect? That is the question.
Yes, I believe that there should be some level of details that would be acceptable. And those are conversations we still need to rush through and get details on. But yes, ma'am, we'll keep working.
Well, I think the key issues are whether there's a front porch or not and where the garage is in relation to the front of the house.
But we've addressed that through the code. The code has already addressed that.
So the second key issue is whether there's an alley or not. You know, those, this is a small decision, alley or no alley, but it has a huge impact on what really gets built.
Are we, I think one thing that may simplify things, are we, are we talking about having specific things to identify a structure as craftsman and things that identify something as Victorian? Because I know when you're talking about, say Deborah's house, hers is typical four-square. Mine is craftsman, is prairie style with four-square elements to it. So you have to, you start pulling this thing into pieces too much, you can drive yourself crazy. So I'm, that's why I'm asking whether we're going to have defining elements in each style so that when they build something out in, well, let's just say Pecan Park, there's, what I would say are a lot of craftsmen structures in Pecan Park. Elements without elements. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Having the set plan and building it with craftsman elements.
That's correct.
And I want to keep reiterating that just because the code doesn't expressly allow it, doesn't mean you can't build it. It just changes who authorizes it. So all the code and this Pattern Book is intended to do is what y'all are approving is if you build this, you can come into staff and either build as infield and regulating plan with no additional permission because it's already been granted by virtue of y'all approving this. So when something isn't in the code or something isn't in the Pattern Book and somebody wants to build it, then they just need to go to PNC and council and y'all get to bless it. So I want to keep reiterating, we're not saying no to anything. We're just determining the process for approval. So if it's in the Pattern Book, then y'all have said, staff, if they show up with this, we're fine with that. So staff can sign off on it, we move right on. So if they show up with something that's not in the Pattern Book, staff's not going to tell them no. We're just going to make them go to PNC and council to get approved. So I don't want us to get hung up on what is and isn't included because it's just whether or not we're going to make it easy for staff to sign off or PNC and council gets to do it.
That's where I was going with this is how are you defining?
What staff is on?
So how are you defining something, say, as craftsman so that staff will look at, yep, it's craftsman, okay? And off they go.
Okay, if you look at the craftsman page, there are actually several characteristics written and also indicated on the facade itself.
It may be helpful to continue going through this and we can get there, but I agree. And then we can point those out, saying you must have columns of this dimension, you must have porch, you must have roof types of this. And you can pick three or four of those elements to represent that. So the second page are the primary architectural styles, and there's going to be minor architectural styles that be associated with that. The following page is the single-family home architecture or residential standards. And it talks about the building articulation along the street and then the elements that are associated with it, interior articulation, how half stories get built, bay windows or projections off of the facades, and there's elements of that. And then you will go to, the following page goes into the roof types permitted and forms that are associated. Again, these are not in order, but they are highlighting the particular elements which are part of the Pattern Book. And then roof pitches that would be appropriate. Again, you still see that there's still blank pages here. Primary facade and how it addresses... Primary facade and how it addresses the streets. You get into doors, windows and composition, so you'll note that. And there's particular elements of this that are associated below that we would love for you all to review and feedback on. The following page is again for residential house, roof types, dormers, roof materials and colors, overhangs. And if there are elements in here that are coded that the community would not like to see, we would like that feedback as well. This is, you know, again, the B3 code is very light in regulations and doesn't regulate a lot and this is very fine-grained. And so, how fine-grained does the community or the council want to see? That's a, that's a question for this.
Alan, is this an ordinance? Is this a subdivision code? What, what kind of rule is this pattern book?
To the extent we're going to mandate certain types or say, use the types that you can build by right and others require blessing from above, it's going to have to be by ordinance. The pattern book can be a separate document that's got to be referenced by and incorporated into our code of ordinances.
Okay, so it's essentially going to be a, what we have now, sort of like a subdivision ordinance and we may call it something different, but it will be ratified and codified, it'll be an ordinance.
Yes, I envision that they envision this will be a separate standalone document, but it's one that's adopted by ordinance and the basic rules about what's required, what's allowed by right and how do you get an exception have to be spelled out by ordinance.
And because where I'm going with that is it seems like if, and we're making our very best shot at this, but if there, if over a one-year period, 18 times, someone's asking permission because it's not allowed by this book and the answer is always yes, then it seems like that's something that we would maybe consider incorporating into the pattern book, just like, why did that get built? Well, we said yes because it was allowed. We don't ever want that again. What do we need to change in the pattern book? But this, it's not just a guideline. It is going to be statute, correct?
That would be my recommendation. I mean, if you like what you see and you like what you're hearing, my recommendation is that we're going to have to make this an ordinance and make it a requirement with a proper process for making exceptions, but the goal should be that exceptions are rare.
Okay, I just want council to have that in mind when you're, when we're reviewing it.
Yeah, because if after a year of experience, I mean, we've already sort of agreed that we will revisit these rules annually, if we see that exceptions are the norm, then I'm going to be asking, why do we have the rule? Because I just think there's a better way to govern than to do it that way. I think the goal of building Bastrop is to have codes that have more flexibility, fewer regulations and allow people to build by right, which means they know what's expected upfront, they know what's possible, they don't have to have everything approved by variance. That's, that's our goal. If that's the case, these are going to be required. And if you do adopt them, my hope would be exceptions would be few and far between.
Great, and that'll streamline the process for the citizens that exist in the community and someone that's coming in new and it allows staff to do staff work and keep day-to-day operations going. Correct?
It should streamline the process for staff. It should streamline the process for the applicants. Fewer things should be coming to you in P and Z. And the development community shouldn't have to wonder what the Bastrop City Council wants because you've adopted parameters, standards and pictures.
Hey, I have a quick question.
Sure.
If it's okay. So, I think it's important since we are saying that we want people to be able to build accessory units, then I think we need to have something in there that says, says that the accessory unit needs to mirror the original structure. You know, if the original structure looks like a box.
He may have something in there, but we haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sure if that page is in.
Because just because it's allowed, I mean, we don't want a big two-story Victorian house behind it, grand style house, you know.
That's a great point.
You're right, we have that already.
Are these going to be essentially design guidelines? I mean, in a lot of cities, they have design guidelines. Is this pattern book taking on the purpose of being a design guideline?
Yes.
Roughly, yes. But there are three, there are three aspects, so three degrees of, from whom? There are three degrees of, I guess, the implementation of the pattern book. One is assistance, the other one is recommendation and the third one is regulation. So, there are parts that are regulating and, but for the most part, I would say two-thirds of the book would be actually inspiration, education and illustration.
No, I'm following up on what Linda said, that when I'm John Q. Public and I walk in and want to build a house in a certain neighborhood, we're going to be able to give them something that outlines the styles that are available in that neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
And what constitutes those styles.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a pity you're missing some of the pages that are already done. Hopefully, we'll get into it in the next few days.
Yeah.
So, you can get a better idea about what's really going on.
This is a lot of content, but there's more content that's already done, that we've done. So, on the next page, we'll go into massing and wall materials. And so, the massing is how the building's made up to the street. Do you have something else you want to add?
Yeah, I was, John's mentioned the ADU. I think we should probably talk about that. There are currently, I mean, it's a, it's a name that most people refer to, but it's backyard house basically. Or there are four different types of ADUs right now. There are five, but I'm not mentioning one which is basement, refurbished basement because we have very few basements and because of the high underground water, I think that makes not sense here. So, there are, like, ADUs is a detached structure from the house, from the main house. There are ADUs which are on top of the garage or workshop. There are ADUs that are actually bump out of the main house and are added to that. And a lot of cities allow, depending on the lot size, allow maybe two of those to be built. And some of them prescribe the square footage, some of them don't. So, I think that's one of the things we, we need to hear from you about. But we definitely recommend that we include the ADUs because they represent what they call gentility. They help, you know, the concentration of people per acre, which eventually when it reaches a certain number can justify public transit. They also allow families to have, you know, members living there together multigenerationally. They can increase the income of the homeowner by renting and all of it. So, they have several different benefits and they're all listed in this, so hopefully you get that page in there.
Mayor and council, that is a policy conversation that would be helpful at this point. There is no right answer. If you've got a small lot, we're going to regulate what happens on that lot through impervious cover requirements. So, it's very unlikely that you would be able to build more than one or two with our impervious cover limits. But there are properties in town that are large and with lots of record have not been platted. And so, somebody could come in and call them accessory dwelling units and have a compound of tiny houses. And I don't think that's what some of the neighbors would want. So, I think one of the questions would be, I think everybody at the diocese is in agreement, accessory dwelling units and being revenue generating is appropriate, but how much is too much?
So, my suggestion, if you guys are going to have a page on ADUs, it would be great if we could have that page in advance and it seems to me that's a very appropriate conversation to have at our joint meeting with P and Z and give some policy direction and let them vet through some of the details if we give them some general guidelines. And I would, my personal suggestion is that we delay and do that then so they can hear the conversation instead of trying to have it tonight and then have it again with planning and zoning. Because I think they would be great folks to vet some of the square footage details that we, we may be, we can give them an idea of, like, we don't want 27, but do we really, to your point, is there a lot of a certain size that more than one is okay? And so, that would be my suggestion, particularly if there's going to be a piece of paper we can look at that would give us all, this is the kind of thing we should be looking at.
So, one of the things that I want to, and we will certainly do that, mayor, one of the things is y'all mulled this over for that meeting, is a lot of what we've regulated have been based on impervious cover and it's, and it's awesome. And so, that then would dictate the footprint in some instances, so we're not generating square footage that then doesn't work and we're having to get exceptions because they don't meet the minimums. Whereas, my comment to you would be is you might be comfortable with one or two and anything over that's on a case-by-case basis and you get to come see city council. But that kind of policy direction is what you have to provide to P and Z, so to your point, they can get in the weeds with it.
Yeah, I would just like them to hear, hear the whole conversation.
Well, and something else we might want to encourage too is just to have those structures built pier and beam because they'll typically be smaller and that really kind of also speaks to the impervious cover question.
I think, you know, I don't know if that's the best way to do that. I think an important point should be that, well, not for the ADUs, but for the buildings facing the street, it's an important point that they be elevated above the street level, two or three feet. And that's, that's a very sticky point because it requires developers or builders to either bring extra dirt or to build a pier and beam. And there are modern versions of pier and beam, not necessarily wood posts, but you can have four-by-four concrete block filled with, you know, some rebars and concrete. And then, then the skirting becomes an issue and the skirting is already treated on some of these pages. You can, you can actually have a log in the concrete that allows you to carry whatever your material is on the outside all the way down to the ground or you can have other things, you can have board, lattice work and, you know.
And the construction industry is going to continue to morph and so, anyhow.
So, we will frame that conversation because, Millisoff, I think that's the conversation the mayor is alluding, that Planning and Zoning Commission could benefit from hearing.
The two important points that Councilmember Jones is mentioning, one is that the ADU cannot be larger than the primary house. And that might happen with the impervious cover limitation because somebody might have a really large lot and the house in the back can be larger than the, the primary house and yet, the impervious cover will be okay. And the second one, that the architecture of the ADU has to be in harmony with the architecture of the.
Agreed, and it's a conversation we want to have with P and Z.
The next page you have, again, goes back to massing and wall materials. And the reason we're highlighting these elements is to ensure that, one, we are writing the standards for the correct elements and to introduce you all to the elements. And, and the second is to make sure that you all are understanding the elements that we're trying to regulate and to generate questions out of these. The next page you have the front porches and expression elements. And then exterior trim and embellishments and would be introduced in the next page. And again, that's for a particular style.
Matt, I have some concerns on the massing when I think about areas like lost pines and somebody's on a three-acre lot, I don't think they're going to build their house massed to the street. So, we've got to.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we shouldn't have lost pines. Everybody who has a lot in lost pines has to plan on coming to council because there's not massing that addresses their, so there's got to be a way to make, we already know it exists, it's a character district, so they ought to be able to find massing that makes sense to their, to their character district.
Well, one of the building types we're introducing is the ranch house. In addition to the smaller ones, I think we should allow on large lots, something that is appropriate for that large lot, but also has some principles that it's following.
So, the ranch, the ranch, ranch house will fit into what Councilwoman Jones was talking, or was it, ma'am? And they said the different, that's a totally different style than you have here.
Yes, sir.
But is that the?
It's all listed in the building types, from ranch house all the way to tiny houses and mobile homes.
So, Matt, let me ask this question. In, in the case of, of a situation where we're doing a village or the conservation subdivision, are we going to have options or I just get to build a ranch house?
You would have a series of options that would be appropriate for that house type.
Okay.
You can select a building type.
Okay.
That would be appropriate. And then you can select different building types that would be appropriate for that area.
Okay.
For example, the next page is townhomes. And so, townhomes are allowed in P4 and P5 only. And so, only those place types would be allowed to receive these. But it talks about how time, how townhomes are built, the orientation, breaks between, between the groups and how they work. And then the presentation of townhomes at the corners and how they relate to the street. The next page is.
Okay, hang on.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
On the townhomes, council, you love every single one of those pictures you're looking at?
An ocean?
Well, now's the time is the point because otherwise, it's going to be this. Oh, that's right, that's right. So, that's something you might think about when you're looking through them.
Yes. Yes, ma'am, that would be great.
I have to say, this is very difficult to work with since it's so incomplete.
Well, and again, we were just trying to introduce you the, the concepts and the pages.
Part of the problem is we can't ever get complete if y'all don't give us feedback. So, part, part of, and I know it's awkward, I know it's building sausage, but you will get a complete document before you adopt anything. But we've got to have some feedback so he can go back and do because we've got a finite amount of money and he doesn't need to go and write something he thinks is great and then y'all knock out 90% of the pictures or y'all don't do this or that. So, it is an awkward question and I appreciate it, it's forcing us to, to be uncomfortable, but when we get to the end, you reserve the right to change your mind yet again, but they got to have a little direction.
I, I don't mind that and my concern is it's hard for me to give feedback when I don't have the full, have a fuller picture, not the complete picture, but a fuller picture.
I completely understand. And some of the concepts we're introducing may not have been thought about. The next page is about towers. Mr. Jones, you're on the right page. The page about towers and how towers get integrated. The idea behind towers, the character of towers, different types of structures of towers, but these could be really great in Bastrop. And you may not have oceans, but you have beautiful views of trees down the rivers and so, there are great views that this could be a type of building pattern that gets introduced.
The idea is that people who live close to the river have a visual access to the river. This, this would be allowed for all the houses that are not necessarily right on the river, but the ones that are behind. When you have a visual contact, you have a feeling that you are really more on the river than you are, actually. So, we're recommending that there are certain areas that are not limited in height, so you can build maybe 100 square feet or 150 square feet, roof terrace and all that in the areas around the river.
I guess my question is you're saying, like, the people that aren't right on the river, then like the next row back, but if you build it that high, wouldn't that be them looking into that guy's area to look over to, you know what I'm saying?
Well, you have a tunnel through the street that you actually, that'll allow you.
You need to talk into the mic, Millisoff, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. You have the tunnel through the street that will allow you to actually see, you know, the.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious, you don't want to be watching, you know, that would make the other person uncomfortable if your house is way up high and they can't do their tanning back there because Bill over here is looking at him.
Anyway, I know we haven't talked about, are you implying? We haven't talked about this before, but that's, that's why it's here to introduce the concept.
Yeah, just to introduce the concept. The next few pages actually are, are going into the, the individual characteristics. You have classic revival and the characteristics, the history and context. And so, all of the individual characteristic styles will have pages that are representative like.
Okay, I don't understand this stuff like Bill Ennis does, but this says classical revival, characteristics of the style. And when I flip back to the first part, it says classical style. So, is classical revival a subset of the classical style?
No, no, it should be the same. We'll take care of that.
Okay.
And again, these, the order of the pages is not in, in order.
You'll have one of these for each of the styles, however many styles we end up with.
There will actually be two pages for each style. One page that generally describes what the style is and gives the characteristics, the other one that shows more technical aspects of it.
Just got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
We, how much influence does the city have over accessibility? So, you're looking at these three-story townhouses and so forth, how much does the city control accessibility?
For ADA's accessibility?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Each development would be required to meet all ADA requirements. So, for example, most of that is governed by federal government and I don't know how much we're going to be coding into this, but.
So, and guys, help me here from a. So, guys, help me hear from an international building code requirement. I think some of that is personal preference as far as whether or not you have a multi-story house and you choose to put an elevator in it, for instance. I think that that isn't something that is typically regulated and it's handled through the building code. And I will remind y'all of something that the mayor talks very passionately about when we give the legislative updates. There is a rule being considered in the legislature that you adopt the international building codes as it is and you don't get to make any local amendments. And so, at this point in time, we could talk about preference, but it's quite possible at the end of the month, it won't matter what we want because if it's not in the code, then we couldn't do it. So, if you want every house that's multi-story to be ADA compliant, then we will have to mandate elevators, ramps, and those kinds of things, which typically now are personal preference issues that when you have that need, they're put in on a personal, person-by-person basis.
I have heard that that drives the cost of development up tremendously and I am not in favor of it. I'll stake my claim right now. It needs to be personal preference.
It's also a matter of public access. If your home is not open to the public for purposes unknown, then the ADA does not apply because then it would be, that's the ownership of the home. So, I just don't think it's something we need to enter.
Yeah, and we're not regulating use. So, if you buy a public home and decide to turn it into a public business, then you may indeed be finding yourself building a ramp into the back door from the parking garage, from the parking area, not garage, parking area. But that would be in your numbers of, can I afford to buy this house and now change the use to this? Is that?
Now, I would think it would be our understanding that if we're talking about work-live structures, the ADA would apply to the workspace, right?
Yes, sir.
But not to the live space.
And actually, I think, it depends on how it's funded, I believe. There's different elements of it. Some say that you may have to have one accessible unit on the ground floor depending on how it's constructed. I don't know the answer to that. Would you research that, though?
Well, there are also different types of live work. You know, there's a live work when the bottom level is work and the level on top of that is okay. But there are also ones, and I'm working on one right now in your brown house, when you have the work up in the front and the live in the back of the same floor. So, in that case, I think you would have to probably make it ADA accessible.
And I'm sorry, but while we're on your ADA notes, that mandatory three-foot, that bumps into a problem when you're in Hunter's Crossing and Riverside Grove and nobody else's house, everybody's house has a porch, but nobody's three-foot above. And so, you shouldn't have to build back with a mandatory three-foot porch on the front, which will then make it not look like anything else in the neighborhood. So, we've got to, I thought the whole point of the character districts was for the neighborhood feel to be consistent. So, we've got to make sure that we have put in where staff can approve and somebody can still build to the neighborhood characteristics.
It will not be written everywhere.
There's a difference between consistency and monotony sometimes. And I think we need to acknowledge that as well. In good neighborhoods, different style buildings could exist peacefully. And you mentioned that, Councilmember Jones, last time. You can have a bungalow or something that, mid-century modern, whatever it is. And that's the whole point of these regulations, that if the buildings all respond to some of the requirements in terms of their own integrity and integrity of the public realm and the building next to it, then different style buildings can coexist. That's what creates the diversity and variety and the form of richness of traditional neighborhoods that we have plenty of in Central Texas.
That's why farm-based codes work for us so well.
Right, absolutely. The next page you'll have is related to P5 buildings or retail buildings or downtown buildings. And it's about massing facade design and materials as well as ground floor and addressing open space and parking. So, those are some elements that we found within that. The next page is particular to craftsmen. And we understand there's a title and characteristics. And then the history and context of craftsmen. And again, every building type that we have and architectural style will have these pages prevalent. The next one is Texas Hill Country characteristics, history and context. And then the, I failed to reference this, but the individual bullets at the top that are in black and white off to the left are the individual characteristics which are representative of those individual patterns of architectural style. So, those could be the elements that you select two or three of in order to accomplish the design. The next one is history and context of the modern.
That's probably something that deserves discussion. We'd like to hear what you think about the inclusion of the modern Indian buildings.
And where they would go and what character districts they'd be representative in or they'd be allowed in all? Or are these appropriate in new districts only and, you know, not the downtown district?
Pretty sure it's not all. I think we can all agree on that. Why did that get you? Not all.
But I don't agree. I think, look, if somebody wants to build something modern and they can incorporate some styles that are consistent with a certain, you know, I mean, you see that in Austin a lot. And I think it works, you know, where people go in and buy lots.
I think there are folks who see that in Austin and that's why they want to live in Bassdrop as well. So, the, like, I don't think Mr. Ennis would be thrilled if this was built next door to him.
No, what I'm saying, though, if something was modern built next door, as long as you could, as long as you can incorporate certain styles that even though it was modern, it reflected that, I don't personally have a problem with that.
The corner office structure right there on Main and Chestnut, the red brick, some people hate it, some people love it, but that was an attempt to build something modern that fit into the texture of the neighborhood. That's, of course, it's all up to your opinion.
Yeah, and that's a whole lot different than this picture that we're looking at. Now, the idea, and we can poll the audience because I know you're wanting some feedback, but the idea of if it's a brand-new area, like if it's an open track, greenfield, and you're creating a new neighborhood character district and maybe it is modern, you know, professionals that live by the hospital to support the hospital, this may be exactly what they would like to have. So, and if you don't like it, don't buy it, right? I mean, there were people that didn't like the idea of zero lotline homes in Pecan Park and it was, then don't buy one and don't move into one if you don't want to live in one. But the point of it not being all is I would have to, thank you for giving me the reference of the red brick would be a modern attempt of something to blend because I don't see this particular picture blending into Main Street.
Yes.
You know, so, and it's because I don't understand all of the different, how do you pick two architectural features, you know?
Well, we're not promoting these pictures. We're just actually putting them here to elicit your response.
But like, think about, think about Tahitian Village. And you will see, well, maybe you won't see them, they'll be off the road, but you'll see, and I have seen, very, very, very diverse styles of buildings in Tahitian. It's almost anything goes out there, pretty much anything goes. Now, I realize a lot of that's not in city limits, but I mean, it's, and even your neighborhood, Connie?
Is there, because I think the mayor raises a great point. Are y'all in favor of if it is a greenfield development, that this is acceptable because it sets the tone for the development? But we need to be very careful, to the mayor's point, that we don't allow this, say, in Old Town. Because I do agree, if this was built next door to Councilmember Ennis, he's going to call me in the middle of the night when he figures it out and he's not going to be happy. So, I think we've got to be careful that we don't let this type of development detract from the fiscal sustainability of the neighborhood because it disturbs the character. So, are y'all in agreement with that line of reasoning or not? I hear Councilmember Jones saying that she's fine with it, so we need to.
Fine, not necessarily fine. I'm just saying, like, in certain areas, like in Tahitian or even up there off Hoffman, you know, you have a very diverse style of housing. And in my opinion, it works. And they're typically bigger lots and a lot of them are further off the road. So, I'm just saying, I mean, there's some places you wouldn't want to have them, maybe, you know, in the historic district, but there's other parts that you wouldn't, you would allow them. I just think it has to be with, like Milosoff just talked about, picking different styles and features that would allow them to blend a little bit, though.
If it's an existing neighborhood, are we not going to be talking about a character district? And it, certain styles are represented in that character district or in that, I always get place types of character districts messed up. In that particular place type. So, to solve the problem, if they want to come in and build something and you've got four place, four different styles in that character district, it would be allowed. But if it was like this in, say, downtown, it wouldn't work.
Maybe we should further qualify some of the characteristics of the modern that we would consider in what the mayor said. You could use actually conventional or traditional materials in a new way. So, maybe that's one of the things. And that's one of the characteristics of it. Instead of using layering, they use, sometimes people who design modern houses use paneling. In other words, they put brick or metal panels or, you know, stone or whatever, more in a coarser grain, if I may say so, you know, on the facade rather than, you know, seeing each individual brick or piece of stone.
Well, to answer your question, Linda, I think that if it was a green space and they wanted to build all of these homes, then I don't think they should stop them. Because you're right, I wouldn't want, if I don't want them to buy it, then I'm not going to, you know, go over there. But there are several people that would love to buy it. You know, I did notice on some of these pictures, they're not pier and beam, so some of them are sitting right on the ground, you know? And that really concerns me like the mayor does of us regulating that it has to be three feet. I mean, my house isn't three feet and, you know, working in an old house is not always the best thing to have a pier and beam, I'll tell you that. So, but I think, I do think it, you know, just open it to a green space. If they want to build 100 of these and they have the rooms, then why not let them? You know, except it's their money if nobody buys it. But, you know, it's just not allowing it in every character district. If there isn't any houses over there like that, then maybe not allow the modern one to be there is what, that's my opinion, so.
And in a new but established planned development, housing such as this would seem to appear to be inconsistent with those homes. And so, I think we needed to find in the green space, I agree with Councilmember Rogers said, the green space, I think we're just going to limit on, well, I don't want to get hit on that again. But the vision, whatever vision they might have is, I think we should open it up and not, not limit them to that thought process.
Sure. And so, I'm just going to bring this back. Green space under the way that it's defined right now is 3.4 acres. 3.4 acres can occur directly adjacent to downtown. 3.4 acres is a farm lot or a building block. And so, it's a building block, I'm sorry. And so, and that would be considered greenfield. But it would be, what you're saying, though, is that they would need to do this.
So, what I would say to you is, hearing what's been said, the planned development district that we have in town is Hunter's Crossing. So, it is dictated by what is there, it would have its own page. The significant greenfield is going to be the Meadows, going to be the Cattlemen's District. So, that could be areas where these are allowed. And in the other areas, they need to come visit P and Z and council because I'm going to tell you, even if you allow them, I'm going to bring it back because I already know my phone's going to ring. So, we just need to be smart about this. There may be some instances in the Lost Pine area because to Councilmember Jones's point, there's going to be, you're not going to be built at the road. You're going to be built off the road. And if it's sheltered, then that style may be allowed. So, I think that with the direction that you've heard, I think we've got something that at a staff level, we can debate this and bring it back and find a happy medium here.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Peterson, are you cool with what you've heard? The one thing, and Councilmember Rogers made me think of this, like the track over there by Lowe's, I think that's 50 acres or something like that. What you don't want is to have somebody pull down three and a half acres, build it wall-to-wall modern, it doesn't sell. And now, you've introduced a character. So, if you're going to introduce something like contemporary that is very, very different than what, you need to be able, you need to be plating and taking down enough that, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
I don't need it to be abandoned and then have empty 47 acres forever because you've built something that's never been built in Bassdrop before. The market doesn't come, it doesn't fit in with the rest of the neighborhoods and everyone's like, what is that? And that could potentially happen. And I know no developer thinks that's going to happen because they think if they build it, they'll all come. And I know they're motivated by, they're going to do a market study. But I just, to your point of greenfield being, I think it needs to be a big, a large enough takedown that there's an investment and you've actually created a neighborhood and not just do a, run a trial of, we're doing a block of super-modern drive-down South Lamar, gee, that didn't work in Bassdrop, you know?
Well, we have on the next page, actually.
You bring up a good point. It's going to be market-driven. The market here may not bear this type of development. So, as we've said before, our whole process should be market-driven.
So, you use some magic words, large enough takedown. What does that look like to you?
It's more than three and a half acres.
Five, 10?
Y'all tell me. With this kind of density, you know, it's going to be that blend of how much, how much can you, can the market absorb in a year? It's your, y'all are the experts, but my point is it's more than one or two small lots. Do you have a feel for the acreage?
I mean, you could say, maybe it's a farm lot. And maybe this is where you say that 10-acre minimum.
Yeah, wasn't it 12 acres inside the gridded streets that we were looking at? So, you got to take down at least one of them as a minimum would seem like a reasonable place to start. Councilmember Ennis, don't let me get in the weeds. Does that seem, am I, do you agree, not agree?
I think it ought to be bigger than that.
Okay, you think?
Larger spaces.
Four farm lots, two farm lots?
How many units could be gotten on four?
Four farm lots.
That'd be 48 acres.
48 acres.
I'm just talking about number one viability, market viability. And to your point, we don't want this little island. So, it needs to be large enough so it's identifiable as a particular area that has a style of living.
And it didn't have to, all four farm lots don't have to be this condo style, right? It could be some retail that's, you know, it can be, still be mixed-use in creating a neighborhood district. I just don't want any little trial, two acres that fits into nothing.
Well, on the next page, though, we limited the number of the same houses on the block. So, you can't really do 10 of these in a row without.
No, 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 I'm talking about the modern style, being that modern.
Modern or anything. You cannot be 10 modern buildings right next to each other, you know, on the block and nothing else. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And we're not promoting modern. I just think we should allow it because if somebody wants to build modern, that's okay.
We just wanted to.
And maybe we just give it a higher scrutiny than usual because there are no rules like there are about other styles.
I agree. I mean, you cannot start getting into the business of telling private property owners what they can and cannot do with their property. I think we're really in the weeds on this thing.
That's what the whole, that's what this whole document is.
I understand, but, I mean, just to come in and just say on one type, well, I like everything, but I just, oh, not that, not unless you have 48 acres. I mean, I don't know, I don't like.
No, we're not saying you can't. We're just saying what can staff appropriate. So, if they want to do something less than that, they get to go to council. So, we're not saying you can't build any of this here.
Because our vision statement said that we were going to have authentic Bassdrop. And what we're saying, what Milosoff is saying, is that particularly to the extent of this picture, this is a contemporary style that does not exist in Bassdrop.
Well, okay, but I'm going to say this, like, if you go up on the north side, there are some very large tracts of land that are infill. And you could do a derivative, because there's a lot of box-style, ranch-style-type properties. And you could do a derivative of a more contemporary style and create a space that has maybe six or eight small houses around a courtyard. And I think that it could be, I think that it's very possible that that can be done in a very. that that can be done in a very economical and attractive fashion. That's, that's really what I'm thinking about when I think about this.
But that's, that's not, what we're talking about is whether or not those six homes would be built in a completely modern style unlike everything around it.
And we're not just talking about the one, we're talking about the wheres. I mean, it's obviously next door to, to Bill's house, next door to my house. This would be inappropriate. But where, there is a where somewhere around Bastrop, that this would perhaps be a viable project.
And 48 acres may be too big, that's the.
And, and again, a situation like Councilmember Jones is talking about, very well could happen. And probably, to your point, and I don't know what they're called, the houses that are being built on Mesquite, what style you would do that, but yes, some of that could be incorporated. But again, that's one of those things that just goes to P and Z in council, because that's not something that we can do on a small scale. I appreciate the comfort level on a big scale. Again, we're not saying no, it's just how quickly do you get the answer?
The next page is important, and it's about neighborhood design, and one of the elements that we had talked about early on was having a variety of, of housing types on it per block. And so this is the integration of, of neighborhood design and creating the variety, how streetscape diversity would be handled, how building sides would be handled, corner treatments as well as side entry garages, and the individual details that would be associated with that. One thing I, I am going to do is we're going to remove the term "single family" from the pattern book and just call it "homes" rather than, because "single family" is not necessarily a term we're coding in, into the entire document. They're just residential structures rather than "single family," just a point of reference in here. The next page, I would ask that we set aside, even if you would like to slide it out of your binder, it's the Civic Space Guide, and we'll, we'll be talking about civic space standards in the next section.
Is that the one that says Plaza Park?
Yes, ma'am, it's a corner of the Plaza Park Market.
It doesn't say civic anywhere.
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, it will.
We'll give him low titles.
And the, the next page is one that I'm really actually excited about and proud of. Milisov hand drew a variety of block patterns to be inspiring to developers coming to town to build within the mandatory street network. And what's being done is an integration of a variety of, of building types, a variety of lot sizes, and green space, civic space, in that civic space could function as either gathering space, it could be stormwater management when it's flooding, they could be soccer fields when they're, when it's dry, they could have playgrounds, they could be community gardens. And so what we're doing is trying to introduce a variety of patterns, block patterns, to the development community so that they can handle alleys and how they can integrate a variety of, of building types into the individual blocks. And so again, these are recommendations of some block types, and we invite the development community to invent their own block types that would be allowed within these. But what was done was the thorough analysis of the Bastrop block. And the Bastrop block is prevalent throughout the downtown area. It was the foundation for the, how the town was created. And so the point was to show a variety of samples of those blocks. And in fact, your blocks downtown don't have any uniformity. In fact, most blocks, every other block varies because they incrementally built out as population came, as, as buildings got built. And so the block patterns and the way that the individual lot characteristics per block are very unique. And so you don't see this. And so what we wanted to do is emulate some of the blocks you have and introduce new blocks, and that's, that's the intent here.
Are the little tiny, those, are those town homes, or?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Those would be town home lots or row houses, brown, they could be.
Generally, generally you have open space, but you have density. People on the outskirts of the neighborhood do not need open space because they have large lots. So that's what we've done here. Whatever you have, small lots, we've given them relief.
Essentially functions like their front yard.
We're also trying to promote something that the, the community has expressed its preference for, and that is pocket neighborhoods and, and pocket parks. So that's why each one of these blocks, in effect, has like an interior park, which we come, is gathering social, you know, place where.
Trey Jobe, how do you feel about maintaining the 45-degree interior streets?
I haven't thought about it much, to be honest with you, mayor, but I'll just take a good look at this and we'll see how that works.
If I were, they're very cool, they're, they're very cool, but if I was Trey, I'd be saying, I'll be needing some extra money to get streets swept and do some maintenance. So I just want us to, I want to make sure you have a, a seat at the table, Mr. Jobe, from a public work standpoint. The little planner people don't have to actually put it on the ground and maintain it, so.
We will have those discussions.
All right.
And, and when I look at that block, I see the fiscal sustainability of that block being so high because the building patterns are so cool, everyone's going to want to live on that block. It's so unique and it provides such great gathering.
As long as we collect enough property tax to maintain it, right? It's all a balance.
There's all free options, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is a very good point. The public works aspects of this is critical.
Yeah, and I really like the idea of the town homes with a, a big yard in front, you know, and depending on how you did it, it could look like three or four big houses and it's actually eight families and everybody has a place to play. And so it's, it's a cool idea, but I just want to make sure at the end of the day, sometime it's not, it's no longer a picture on the paper and it's.
For, for all we know, this could be the development size of a lot of people, and it's 12 acres. So we're also trying to promote the variety of housing types. So each, each one of these has three or four.
Yep.
And we talked about social sustainability before, you know, because what you do better in life, you don't have to move from the neighborhood to buy a bigger house. You can buy a bigger house, just two houses down from yours, and your kids keep their friends, you keep your friends, and the community, you know, continues to.
So Matt, are, is this a P2, P3, P3, P4? How, I mean, how many place types do you have to have for these different blocks?
These examples wouldn't house all of them. P2, 3 and 4, I'm sorry, 3, 4 and 5 would be housed within these.
So that's something for council that you keep in mind when a character district, if you, if you like these blocks, when you get to the character district that you think these blocks would make sense, then you've got to know in your heart you're going to be allowing P3, 4 and 5, or you're, you, you, we can't like it one way and then not allow it the other. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that's absolutely correct, yes.
Well, we just wanted to test the 722 by 722. For example, the, the block in the upper left corner allows for the creation of, of the boulevard or avenue, and that was, that's what this is supposed to, to show. You can have really big lots, 150 foot deep and maybe, you know, 80 feet wide. They could have some beautiful stately homes on them like many cities do, you know.
The next page is working with tradition, and again, this will tie back to the modern. That actually should have been, is that the following page that?
Yeah.
Yeah, this was the following page to the modern.
Yeah.
Yes, that, that was actually the following page to the modern.
I don't know, we may take one of these pages out, but, you know, we, we talked briefly about what, what we thought about the best way we're working with tradition is. So when we're talking about modern, you know, I guess one aspect of the modern could be traditionally inspired modern, you know, which I would say your, your Lost Pine Art Center is. You can talk about the quality of design or not, but that's probably what inspired it. And you city hall, too. It's based on maybe more agricultural.
And, you know, to be clear, Connie, that's what I think about, too, when I think about modern. I know you were looking at those pictures, but I, I think that's a really good point. When we looked at the art center, we looked at city hall, it's just a derivative. And that went, so when I'm talking about modern, I'm not specifically talking about these block deals, so just, I think we were talking about two, kind of two different.
Well, I look at this and I see those two structures in the very middle on the right-hand side. They both have, they're both kind of prairie style. They're both two-story, one's a fireplace in the front, and the other one has old windows. That could conceivably be infill for the historic, historic history.
This is one of the most successful developments in the United States that actually carries or pushes the boundaries on how to deal with traditional architecture. So it's slightly, it's funky, and slightly on the other side are normal, but I think it feels in some way still the same scale and appropriate scale, you know, for, it's a, this place is called Prospect Longmont in Colorado.
Prospect what?
Prospect Longmont.
It's in Longmont, Longmont, Colorado.
Yeah.
And they carried this forward even into their town center design. And so it's really a different architectural style. But again, we wanted to introduce that, that there's maybe certain elements in here that could pull out. And Mr. Ennis, we would love to work with you on this. Maybe there are certain things, characteristics of this that could be integrated in for allowance in the, in the downtown area. Next page is the Victorian page and the characteristics and history and context within that. And then the massing and scaling that goes along with mixed-use apartment buildings is on the following page. Again, these are really, this is a really important page, so please review that one in totality. And I, Mrs. Umble, I don't know if you'd like, I can go through this probably in 15 minutes. If you'd like me to hit it, I can, it's up to you when they come.
At 5:00, we got to be fair to, that clock, I guess it's not that far off. So it's 5:51, you got 15 minutes and we're cutting you off.
Yes, ma'am, all right, we'll do it. Parks and civic space, this is something that is quite different from the way that you regulate now. I'm shifting gears on you a little bit away from the pattern book, but if you would grab your pattern book page, we are going to be talking about these individual characteristics for civic space into the pattern book.
Yeah.
Civic space is going to be parks, it's going to be plazas, hardscape plazas and green space plazas. It's going to be central greens. They're gathering spaces where the community can gather. They're civic buildings. And so as we go through, oops, this is one of my favorite civic spaces that you all have is, is your bridge. I remember the first time coming to Bastrop, it's so iconic, it's a great gathering space. Once this is done, you could put picnic tables out there and string lights across it, have ceremonies. I'll move on. Next, you have parks and linear trail systems. Those are civic spaces that connect linear neighborhoods. They can also be used for transportation infrastructure. Trail systems that connect neighborhoods to services function as civic space, but they also function as infrastructure. And so we'd like you all to see them as infrastructure. Parks are larger in nature versus what you'll see is squares and plazas. Parks are generally linear, linear in their function like corridors. They're liners that connect from places, people to places in a more linear manner. Playgrounds are smaller, they're integrated, and they generally have playground equipment. Here's a trail system that just allows people to walk, that has seating that fronts into a pond. Playgrounds look like this. They have play facilities for children. The way that we've written this currently, based on your standards, is that a playground shall be provided every 660 feet in proximity to residential units, only if it's residential and construction. That ties back to your building Bastrop, that's two building blocks. Two, within two building blocks, children should have access to parks. That's the way that it's currently drafted. Plazas are hardscape.
So on that, I would, it would be great for you to bring back to the joint plan, how many parks would that, would be required in like Hunter's Crossing if this rule had been in place? What would it look like at Riverside Grove? Because, you know, are you, is it a parklet every two blocks?
Yes, playground.
Or is it a playground? Well, how big is the playground to make it a playground?
As long as it has play, uh, equipment, it could be a pocket playground. So it can be a small lot, you know, 60.
It would just be interesting, and so, like Riverside Grove has Bob Bryant Park, it's more than two blocks away, but it's a large, so how, how does that work with the rules that you have written? Because it gives us a, oh, okay, so that would have been this much different, or this would have worked. So that would be.
We will, we'll run that analysis.
Is this greenfield versus greenfield, or is this everywhere?
Uh, this is greenfield.
Yeah, okay.
It's greenfield development. Thanks for the clarification.
Well, we, we don't specify the maximum or minimum size for playground, but we do for other open spaces.
Okay, I just, again, run it through for that size, if these rules were in place, kind of what would it have looked like?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's a great idea. Plazas are really important, provide gathering spaces. Civic buildings can be post office. This is a post office in a development we're in a tour in Louisville called Norton's Commons, and it's a gathering space integrated into the community. It's a tiny little post office building, built in the same context that the.
That's not the inside of that building, is it?
No, ma'am, that would be a miracle. But this is the train station, and, you know, this is another civic space civic building. I just wanted to make point. And here's your, one of your civic buildings. And so this, the classification would be civic space on your zoning map and the translation of how this gets built. Another civic building, schools. The integration of public art into civic facilities, this is an example, and I believe this is in Indianapolis. And they, basically you can power these bikes and it turns the lights on. It's just a public art installation. Again.
The bean.
The bean is one of the most famous gathering areas where people come and stare in this thing for hours, and they'll just sit in the plaza and stare into this bean and make funny faces. And it's just a great expression of, of people's self, and so providing this. This is a recycled bucket exhibit where they just created a space for people to gather. Integrating these through public spaces is important. So having the plaza space for demonstrations or for, you know, exhibits like this was the intent. We were writing civic standards, we will have those for the joint workshop with the individual characteristics. We'll run those scenarios prior to bringing that terminology forward. So with that, we are here to answer any further questions the council may have.
You did excellent.
Thank you, ma'am.
Given you deadlines from now on. Okay, so the feedback you want from council on this piece of paper is?
If you all can read it and provide insight of, we're on the right track, there are elements you're missing, these characteristics don't belong in these districts, that type of feedback. How to collect it is going to be something I will, I'll work with staff on.
My suggestion is that, and, and we'll, we'll get this, but we'll probably schedule a time in an afternoon, two by two by two, so that he can sit down and you don't try to capture the essence of this in an email, it's too hard. So we really need some face-to-face time. So we'll schedule that in probably next week so that y'all can come in, spend 30 minutes, download and give them what they need.
Okay, council, any further feedback you want to give Mr. Lewis and Mr. Milisov? Everybody okay?
What, Mr. Ennis, we're really counting on you to carry the water on this. So, be leaning on you. All right, it is 5:57 and we are in recess and we will be back at 6:30 to call our regular session to order.
So these gentlemen, please.
Yes.
We will not be doing the continuation.
So the item.
I'm a talker.
Item 9D is pulled from the agenda, and I will make that statement again at 6:30. But 9D is now pulled because we completed this prior to the 6:30. Okay? So we are officially in recess and we will be back at 6:30. Thank you, everyone, for your support. Thank you, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis.
And I am calling this meeting to order. We are very honored and privileged to have, under the direction of Captain Chris Fletcher, the Bastrop Navy Junior ROTC, will be doing our pledge of allegiance today. Tonight with us, we have Cadet Lieutenant Commander Sam Stewart, who will be a commanding officer next year. We have Cadet Lieutenant Paulina Valencia, who will be the executive officer next year, and Cadet Senior Chief Alex Holder, who will be the command senior staff senior chief for next year. next year. Stewart and Valencia are juniors, so they are getting ready to be big people on campus. They'll be seniors as soon as they, as soon as graduation's over with, they'll be seniors next year. The, Mr. Stewart is going to join the Navy and then he believes he'll be going to school and getting a mechanical engineering degree, so he made my heart very, very happy. Ms. Valencia is also going to join the Navy and she's deciding for sure what she wants to do. And Cadet Senior Chief Alex Holder is going to join the Navy, become a corpsman, get training and become a firefighter. And I've already signed him up with Chief Resolus and Chief Algelt, so we'll have a spot waiting for him. So if everyone will please stand, these great young men and women are going to lead us in our pledges.
Please, flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Cadet pledge.
Sir.
This Cadet's cadet pledge is, I am a Navy Junior ROTC cadet. I always conduct myself and marry and pledge my family to school and court cadets. I am the feature United States of America. I am loyal and patriotic. I do not lie, cheat, steal or tolerate those who do. I always be accountable for my actions, deeds. I always practice citizenship. I will work hard to prove my mind, strengthen my body. I will seek the mantle of leadership, stand, parent, uphold the conscience of the United States. Woo rah! About. Base.
Thank you so much Captain Fletcher for bringing them out tonight. We really, really appreciate it. If you will remain standing, our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Bernie Jackson. Pastor Jackson?
Almighty Father, we come before you this evening, God, with thanksgiving in our heart, thanking you for your continued grace and your mercy. We come tonight, Lord God, asking that you would continue to bless and guide those that lead the city of Bastrop, touch the hearts and minds of those who are being sworn in tonight, God. And we ask also, Father, that you would protect our law enforcement tonight, God. And first responders, bless them as they go about their jobs, God. Surround them with your peace and your, your protection, Father. Help us tonight to understand, God, that we're all working for the same cause, that of righteousness. So bless us, God, with your peace, your guidance and your understanding. We thank you, God, for all who serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much Pastor Jackson. All right, we've got some, some important things to do here. And the first thing that we will be doing is having part one of our individual consideration. I'm on the bottom of page one of the agenda, item 6A. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-42 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to canvass the May 4th, 2019 election for place one and place five of the Bastrop City Council and establishing an effective date. City Secretary, do you have any comments or do I just need to canvas the votes?
Let me see. Okay. Picked up the wrong thing. Here they are, over here. Okay, so we had the election on May 4th and for council place one, Ishmael Harris received 259 votes and W.L. Bill Peterson received 347 votes. So Mr. Peterson will, is the winner of that election. For city council place five, Doc Jackson received 298 votes, Herb Goldsmith received 118 votes and Deborah C. Jones received 204 votes. So these are the official results with respect to the county election office. Correct?
So we need a motion to approve these official results?
Madam Mayor, still approve.
I have a motion from council, from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Second.
And I have a second from council member Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Ennis?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously and those are the official results. We're moving to the next page to item 6B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-43 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for a runoff election for place five of the Bastrop City Council for designating, for a term of three years, designating the date of said election, designating polling places, designating early voting hours and places, directing posting and publication of notice for said election and providing for an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Mayor and council, this resolution is pursuant to section 2.021 of the Election Code of the State of Texas and article nine, section 9.07 of the Bastrop City Charter. It is provided that if no candidate for a particular office receives the vote necessary to be elected in an election regarding a majority vote, a runoff election for that office is required. And we are asking to set the runoff date for June 8th with a canvas of June 18th.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. One thing I would like to explain to the public, because there's been some, I thought if you got the most votes, you win. And the way that our, the way the law is, is you are required to get 50% plus one vote.
Yes ma'am.
And there were 620 people who participated in the city council place five vote. So half of that plus one vote would be 311 votes. So since no one received 311 or more votes, we are by law mandated to go to a runoff. And Madam Secretary, I know you fully understand that, I just wanted to make sure everyone in the public was aware of that. We're just following the law.
Yes ma'am, so what that means is that the two candidates that got the highest votes are in the runoff.
Yes ma'am. Okay, so, this resolution sets June 8th?
Yes ma'am.
And June 18th when we would canvass?
June 18th for the canvass and the beginning, early voting would be May 28th, ending on June 4th.
And the last two days of early voting are seven to seven?
12-hour voting day, I mean 12-hour days.
12-hour days, yes ma'am. Council, do you have any further questions regarding the runoff election? Happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from council member Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Council member Ennis?
Yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes unanimously. There will be a runoff election on June 8th that will be canvassed and we will have a special meeting on June 18th and swear in the successful person of that, that wins that runoff election. We are now moving to item 6C. Consider action to approve resolution number 2019-48 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a contract for election services between the elections administrator of Bastrop County and the City of Bastrop for the June 8th, 2019 runoff election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and providing for an effective date. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you stated, Mayor, this is a resolution to enter into a contract with the Bastrop County to conduct the election for us. And it's come to my attention that there's been a request, I got a phone call today actually from Bridgette and she was explaining to me that there's a request for moving the election to City Hall. And I also spoke to another citizen about that request, wanting that to happen. The county conducting our election for us, well let me back up. The election, the runoff election is costing us $19,607.78. And if we move it to the City Hall, that would increase our cost tremendously. The county is actually, Bridgette is using her staff to conduct the election for us, the runoff, I mean the early voting and election day for us. And so, that caused, by her using her staff, that's not costing the city any extra money because she's not hiring any election workers to conduct this, they're doing it for us. And also, we've had, we've had a joint, ever since we've had a joint Bastrop election that was not a joint election with Bastrop I X D conducted since 2014, it's been held at the courthouse annex location. And consistency does help the voters to know where to go to vote, it helps them. And the, I was also, it was brought to my attention that there was a concern that the elevator was broken. But I was there yesterday and I used the elevator, it wasn't broken. And also, I have a report here that the recent inspection, the last inspection of the elevator was April 5th, 2019. So that's been done. Also, the concern for moving it to City Hall was to allow people that weren't able to go up and down the stairs or that it was an inconvenience to go inside to have more accessibility. But there is a state law that requires curbside voting. So the administrator is by law required to bring a ballot to the curb for anyone that needs that assistance. And also, there are signs placed outside the curb, in front of the building, all around to let the voters know that that is available to them and giving them instructions on how to contact the election workers on receiving that service. So we are very sensitive to our voters' needs and we're very, very happy with how the county supports our sensitivity with working with our, for our voters and making sure that they have everything they need to, to conduct their voting.
Council, do you have any other questions for City Secretary? I have, I have someone signed up who missed the deadline of 6:30, but I'm going to make an exception, so Doc Jackson, if you would like to address council?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Um, Mayor, Council and City Manager, I was asked to speak on this item for the runoff election by several elderly and working commuters in our community who contacted me and asked me to advocate for them. And some I see have contacted City Hall already. There may be others that have tried to reach some of you and I don't know if you've been contacted or not, but they had three major concerns about the election. And those three concerns are, and I'm just advocating for them, these are not my concerns, I'm, don't shoot the messenger, in other words. The first is the location. They would prefer it not be at the county annex for accessibility reasons. It's in the basement and although there is an elevator and stairs, some are uncomfortable in an elevator, even today, some people don't like getting on elevators. And others cannot walk up and down the stairs. Curbside voting is an option, but because of some of these people's pride that they have, they don't want, they want to walk into the actual polling place and vote, they would rather not vote than have someone to come out to the car to them and bring them a ballot. I vote as wherever I, any way I can get in, I go to vote. But some people have expressed that and that they feel that the City Hall would be a much more ideal location for the city election. Secondly, the hours, eight to five for four to six days, they don't feel as adequate for those who work out of town and for the elderly who depend upon these commuters to take them to the polls. There are two days that are seven to seven, 12-hour days, and that's good, but they feel more should be allocated. And thirdly, the days, there are no weekend days except for election day. And at least one other weekend date would be a tremendous option. As I've said, these residents feel it really, they want to increase, if you really want to increase voter turnout, that there should be more accommodating to their needs and they think that they have shown you by not showing up to the polls that we need to increase our voter turnout. And I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to voice those opinions for them. That's from several citizens that contacted me and we're supposed to be contacting the council and staff as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Council, any other questions or comments?
City Secretary, do we have any data that indicates that voter turnout is affected in any negative manner by having the election at the courthouse as opposed to having it at City Hall?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Councilor Ennis?
You mentioned that there would be an additional cost if we had it here at City Hall. Do you know what that number would be?
No, sir, I don't know what the number would be, but I do know that we would have to hire election workers. The county staff would not come here to conduct the election. We would be on our own to do that and to hire workers. And to rent the equipment and.
We already know that it's going to cost us close to 19,000 or over, 19 or over, so it would be, it would be over that amount probably.
Yes, sir, and the county is working diligently with us to, to help cut the cost for us any way that they can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or a motion, Council?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from council member Rogers?
Second.
I have a second from council member Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
Yes.
Council member Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council, the motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item 6D. This is also something that is required by the Charter at the first council meeting after an election has been canvassed. Then we are to elect a Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Ennis?
We've had the extreme pleasure and we've been fortunate to have the services of our current Mayor Pro Tem Nelson do that job for us this last year and he's done an excellent one. And I think he has worked very well with you on the many projects that we have undertaken this year and I'd like to nominate him again for that position for this coming year.
Thank you.
Second.
Excellent. I have a nomination from council member Ennis, I have a second from council member Peterson. Is there, council member Rogers?
I wanted to second it. Can I third it?
All right, Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, do you, are you accepting of the nomination?
Very appreciative of the comments and yes.
Excellent. Madam Secretary, if you, any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council member Ennis?
Yes.
Council member Peterson?
Yes.
Council member Jones?
I fourth, yes.
Council member Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, I'd like to give Mayor Pro Tem Nelson my personal thanks for all of the time and work that he's put in this last year and for him agreeing to take it on for next year. Let's give him a round of applause. All right, we're moving on to item number seven and I get to introduce my favorite judge and that is the Honorable Chris Dugan, State District Judge for District 423. We are moving to item 7A. The, we'll be swearing in the incoming Associate Judge Caroline McClyman. Oh, and he's mic'd up, I can tell he's mic'd up, so it's all yours.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to violate state law, no. All right, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Judge Caroline McClyman.
I, Judge Caroline McClyman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Associate Judge.
Of Associate Judge.
Of the City of Bastrop, Texas.
Of the City of Bastrop, Texas.
And will to the best.
And will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Laws and ordinances.
Laws and ordinances.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And of this city.
And of this city.
So help me, God. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
You did it.
Caroline, stay, stay up front. And Judge Coy and Associate Judge Carver are with us tonight. If they would both come forward, we can get a picture of our full municipal judgeship.
If it's more than, is it a couple of judges?
You need a silence? I did it again. I'm sorry. Let's use the sink.
Did you want to make a comment to any, if you'll stand at the diocese, the mic, you're welcome to say a few words.
Well, I just wanted to thank the city council for their...
You have to speak into the mic or no one can hear you at home.
Please, we can hear me. I'm going to borrow this. I just wanted to thank city council for their faith in me and believing in me to, to take on this position. It's actually quite appropriate for Judge Dugan to administer this oath. I've essentially grown up as a baby lawyer in front of him, but he's taught me, and Judge Eskey, they've taught me what it is to be a judge. It calls for immense humility to know that you're still a person just like the fellow citizens that are appearing before you and immense patience to make sure that everybody has the ability to have their due rights, their due process rights protected and to make sure that they have an opportunity to present their case and to put on their, their evidence to ensure that their rights are being protected. And so he's taught me that. He's so humble when he listens to the family law cases that I present to him. And so he's taught me what it is to be a judge and I am appreciative of the opportunity to try to take those lessons and embody that in this position. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
And now we're moving on. We're taking advantage of Judge Dugan being here and we are going to swear in incoming Councilmember Bill Peterson into Place One. Yay! So if you'll step forward, Judge Dugan will swear you in. Willie, you are required for this. Yes, ma'am.
You're Mrs. Councilman, you can stand wherever you want.
Thank you. This is the first time I've been asked to do this. How many times have you been on the council?
Well, some of us husbands are a little bit, we're like slow learners, okay? You ready? All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bill Peterson.
I, Bill Peterson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council, Place One.
City Council, Place One.
Of the city of Bastrop.
City of Bastrop.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best.
Will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, detect, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
Of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Wait, Willie, don't run off. You have to get your picture taken with him. Colin's going to take y'all's picture real quick. Mr. Peterson, stand by your wife, get some pictures.
Go to work.
Okay, he's going to sign some paperwork. I'm going to give him an opportunity to say a few words and then we will be having a reception. We'll go into recess for about 20 minutes and we'll come back to our regular meeting. We'll be starting with presentations at about 7:20, but we're going to let him get some paperwork done here real quick first. Counselmember Peterson, you want to say a few words to the audience?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to say thank you to my daughter-in-wife that puts up with my antics. I got that out of the way. I want to say thank you to all the citizens of Bastrop that have the, that helped me get back, elected back to the city council and I really appreciate that. And I'll repeat again, I am not a politician, I'm a public servant and I carry that to my heart. So thank you very much.
It is an honor and a privilege to serve with you, Mr. Peterson, and I'm very glad to have you back on council with us. Any other, anybody else want to make any comments? Want to give everybody a chance? Want to make any, you can tell him in private. Okay. It is 6:57, we are in recess and we will reconvene at 7:20. There's a reception out front. Please enjoy the goodies and you can have a moment to visit with Mr. Peterson. We are in recess. All right, I got a quorum. It's 7:20, we are back in session, we're making some presentations. The first presentation that we have tonight is for motorcycle safety and awareness and we have some folks from Shenanigans. So Shenanigans folks, come on up here and join me. And any other motorcycle riders, any other motorcycle riders that would like to come to the front? And Councilmember Peterson?
That would be my sexy biker man.
If we ever had time to ride.
Yeah. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion, whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike to motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists and to obey all traffic laws. And whereas motorists are encouraged to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for the riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect that they deserve. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize May as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Let's give them a round of applause. There you go. He wants to take a picture? Oh, you don't want this, right? We got to move down?
Move it down, move it down.
I'm feeling pretty safe right now. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. And our next group of folks that we're going to recognize is Public Works. So if you are in Public Works, yes, that's you, Trey. Come on up. Well, Curtis was already coming. Trey was looking like he didn't know what Public Works was, so. All right, we got everybody? Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Bastrop, Texas. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste system, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders and children in Bastrop, Texas to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs. Whereas the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the week of May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week. Let's give them a round of applause. I just want to take a real quick second. Whenever I go and talk to elementary schools and they want to know, what do you do as a mayor and what does a city do? And we talk about, did you brush your teeth this morning? Did you go to the bathroom this morning? Did you ride on the road this morning? There are things that you take for granted all the time. You don't think about them at all. And when you do think about them, you are usually not happy. So this is a group of folks that are very underappreciated and I just want to tell each and every one of them how much we count on them and appreciate their hard work every day. The next group is my front row. Come on up. Chief? Chief chiefs, all of you, come on. Chief chief? So before I read this proclamation, you'll see, "It's not an accident that I'm wearing a blue dress and have on black shoes." Did you guys notice? And the pin that I'm wearing, the city manager said, "Don't let Chief Al Geltz see that it says Austin." It was given to me by Ruth Bullock. It was given to me by Ruth Bullock, who is our receptionist and is a retired City of Austin police officer. So Chief Al Geltz, I told the city manager, "I'm not worried about it. He can take it up with Ruth because I know baby Ruth can hold her own and it won't be a problem." So I just, the police officers always have a special place in my heart and I'm so glad to be standing up here with each and every one of you. So let me read this proclamation. Whereas the citizens of Bastrop gather to recognize and honor our law enforcement officers for their faithful service and sacrifice while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 sworn law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States. Whereas nearly 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in over 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of Bastrop Police Department. Whereas in 2018, 163 fallen heroes throughout the nation have been killed in the line of duty, including 11 from the state of Texas. In 2019, 37 fallen heroes throughout the nation have been killed in the line of duty, including three from the state of Texas. The names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, DC. And the names of the heroic Texas Peace Officers are engraved on the Texas Peace Officer Memorial in Austin, Texas. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families and US flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas Congress has designated the calendar week that May 15th falls in to be known as National Police Week. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 13th through the 19th as Police Officer Week in Bastrop, Texas. Let's give these men and women a round of applause. I was going to say, I didn't know, Chris was here too. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. Whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. Whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the week of May 5th through the 11th as the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerk's Week. And further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk and Franklin and to all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Let's give Ms. Franklin a round of applause. Trey, is that you again? Come on, Matt Jones.
It's Matt and I...
Come on, Andreas, you knew you were here for something. Whereas whether due to harsh weather conditions or merely age and everyday use, our homes and workplaces undergo significant wear and tear, some, some more than others depending on the family makeup. I can speak from having two boys. Whereas when implemented consistently and efficiently, strong building codes can save lives and protect property. Whereas sensible codes, well-trained professionals and an efficient enforcement system are essential to creating and maintaining safe environments for individuals, families and businesses. Whereas the City of Bastrop will be updating our international codes this year as part of the Building Bastrop Initiative. Whereas each year, the month of May is dedicated to raising awareness about the need for resilient structures for Bastrop citizens to live, work and play. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of May as Building Safety Month. Let's give these gentlemen a round of applause.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is my mayor's report, and we have a long agenda. We're going to jump right into it today, Colin. The pictures that you see are some activities that I participated in. I'd like to draw your attention to the upper left-hand corner. You're going to hear from some of these kids later tonight. I was so honored to be a part of Generation Citizen, and I got to be a judge on some of their projects. We have one of the Generation Citizen board members in the audience with us tonight, and I was really honored because I was chosen their Civic Leader Changemaker for this year. And so I gave a speech, and it's just really great to be around young people as they're getting more involved in civics, which quite frankly, one of the things I talked to them about was, less than 12% of our registered voters participating in an election is an unacceptably low number. And I know getting these kids enthusiastic and getting them educated on civics told all of them that between now and turning 18 that they had my personal permission to annoy every person they knew to make sure that they all always voted in all of the elections. Just below that picture, I went to the HOG Foundation Seminar, and there's a picture of me with Dr. Martinez and Dr. Moore. The Library Volunteer Appreciation Lunch was very well-attended. The EDC sponsored the Youth Career Day. That's in the bottom left-hand corner, and I'm there with one of the Texas Workforce Commissioners, really a great guy. And then this was my favorite picture from Youth Career Day with the Great Hall. I walked up to the guys and said, "Okay, it's either a rental or you guys just washed it." And they started laughing and said, "Yeah, we washed it yesterday," because I knew that that piece of equipment, as much as it does around town, I'm not used to seeing it that quee, that clean. But I was, they looked great, and the kids were real interested in that. That was my early voting picture that I put out on Twitter and Facebook trying to encourage people to vote. And we had one of our Building Bastrop Community Meetings, and the Citizens on Patrol did a bunch of the legwork of putting on the stamps and labels so that we could get the postcards out that so many people in the community enjoyed. That was a picture that Baby Ruth took of me getting interviewed by Kview. I attended the 13th Annual Spring Gala at the Lost Pines Art Guild, and you'll see just above that, they had a glass-blowing demonstration, which was real interesting. Then the Best Breakfast, that's me with the Mayor Scotty Saunders from Smithville and Mayor Chris Cannon of Elgin. Chris told me one time, if there was two of us, it was collusion. If there was three of us, it was a meeting. So we try to always meet in threes. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see I participated in the BAIPP 2D art call. In the center is the Table on Main pictures. We had a great time. It was just perfect, perfect weather for Table on Main. It was a lot of fun. And I also attended the FCI Community Luncheon. Then on the next page, you may recall back on May 2, we were supposed to have horrendous thunderstorms, so Emile Elementary was going to come by City Hall, but that got rescheduled. They're coming this week on Wednesday and Thursday, I believe. The National Day of Prayer was May 2. We've already talked about the Election Day. And on May 6 through the 10, I want to take just a quick moment. Gateway is our school where some students, if they are not able to continue at their normal campus, they may spend a few days, a few weeks at Gateway. And that means that that school has an ever-changing student population, so they don't have a PTA. So when it came to Teacher Appreciation Week, there wasn't really a group of parents that were appreciating those teachers. And I spoke at Gateway about a month ago, and I was, one of the secretaries asked if City Hall would be interested in supporting them for teacher appreciation. And I talked to the city manager. It took two nanoseconds. Baby Ruth and Tracy Chavez, they, those teachers have felt fully appreciated last week, and I just want to send a special thanks out to Ruth Bullock for all the hard work that she put into that. I attended the Library Board Meeting on the 6th. We had our Design Code Come and Go Rodeo last Thursday, and tonight's City Council. Tomorrow, I will be at the Peace Officers Memorial Service that starts at 10 o'clock at Fairview Cemetery. And at 4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, I'll be at the Mike Fisher Building Dedication. Then on the 16th and the 17th, I'll be attending the TML Small Town Conference, and I believe Mayor Protem Nelson and Councilmember Ennis will be attending as well. I have a BEDC Board Meeting on Monday. The following Monday is Memorial Day, and then it will be the City Council Meeting. There are three other events I want to make you aware of. There's a new business called Texas Vision. Their ribbon cutting's on May 22. The Bastrop County Emergency Food Nipples Program is having their ribbon cutting on May 23. And the awards for BAIPP, that award ceremony is on May 25. And I intend to attend all of those meetings. But the most important thing that we have failed to recognize today, today is Councilmember Ennis's birthday. Let's have a round of applause for Councilmember Ennis. So with that, we're moving to the next item, which is 8G Councilmember Report, and we'll start with Birthday Boy. What you got for us, Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows, I've been out of the country for two weeks and got back on Sunday. And while I was gone, I got a very rewarding email that I would like to share with you. This is from one of our citizens who lives downtown, and I quote, "I had some weird electrical issues in the office on a Saturday. No power to the fridge and freezer, all of the electronics. Called the city's after-hour number, and over the next several hours, two pole trucks showed up. They swapped out a transformer that was arcing, and I was back in business. Just this morning, my plumber came by to fix a leaky shower. He couldn't shut the water off, a sticky shut-off valve, and the city came out to help. Got the valve turned so that my plumber could get to work. They were surprised that the valve was so old, should have been replaced during all the water sewer work on the street that he lives on." I'm quoting that. "And then came back to put in a new valve, valve. Just saying, kudos. And I personally like to thank Curtis and Curtis and Trey for this kind of letter."
Councilmember Jones, do you have anything for tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Nothing really, but you kind of let it slide by that you were called a designated as Civic Leader Changemaker?
Yes, sir.
That deserves a round of applause.
Oh, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the mayor, city manager, and all these council members. It's, over the last three years, it's been a great pleasure working with you folks, because we've got a good team. And I look forward to working the next three years and hope to continue the good work that y'all do. I'm not even going to say me, but I want to say thank you. It's been my pleasure. And happy birthday, Bill, and happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, city manager, do you have anything?
I do, Mayor. I have a couple of things. I want to just mention that we did have the Code Rodeo last Thursday. It was very well-attended. We've got some very positive feedback from the participants, and we really appreciate it. We're in kind of the home stretch of our code work. The consultant's going to turn it over on the 24th, and then P&amp;Z, I mean, council's going to hand it off to P&amp;Z, and they will spend some time on it. I hope that everybody has gotten kind of our postcards and seen our social media, but would ask that you put June 8 on your calendar. That's going to be our pop-up event on Main Street, and we're bringing the codes to life. So you will be able to walk Main Street, and we'll have various things happening. On the 28th of May, we're going to give a presentation that night. We'll be two weeks out. We're still finalizing some details about what will be happening in the pop-up project, but Rebecca will be giving a presentation about that, so we can get some excitement. One of the things that's going on this weekend, Thursday through Sunday, is the Bastrop Music Festival that will be hosted by Visit Bastrop. And as Councilmember Peterson said, we're going to be celebrating the mayor's birthday on Thursday. So happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, turns out, since it's my meeting, I get to call things in whatever order I want. And we have a group of students here from Circa, and they need to be doing some studying. So I am moving to individual consideration, item number 13E. And you will find that on page five of your agenda. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-19 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Hands-Free Devices and Ordinances of the City of Bastrop, Amending Chapter 12 Traffic and Vehicles of the City of Bastrop, City Code of Ordinances to Add Article 12.13, Use of Portable Electronic Devices While Operating a Motor Vehicle in the City of Bastrop, Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Repeal, or Severability, Criminal Fines Not to Exceed $300 per Offense, Effective Date, Codification, Proper Notice and Meeting, and Place on the May 28, 2019 Consent Agenda for Second Reading. Chief Alkelt?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I have to do some research and talk about a hands-free ordinance that we would be looking to enact. And the first thing I want to do is get some definitions, so we all talk on the same, the same language, if you will. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration defines distracted driving as any activity that diverts attention from driving, including talking or texting on your phone, eating and drinking, talking to people in your vehicle, fiddling with a stereo, entertainment or navigation system, or anything that takes your attention away from the task of safe driving. When I did some research, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, or NHTSA, that I'll call it for the remainder of this presentation, had some research and opined that in 2017, 3,166 people were killed in our nation as a result of distracted driving. 3,166 people. So I said, "Well, let's see how, what happened in the city of Bastrop in 2017." And in 2017, for our small community, we had 1,003 reported traffic accidents within our city limits. And tragically, five fatalities resulted in those accidents just within the city of Bastrop. I will tell you that consistently for the last five years, we have averaged over 1,000 reported accidents a year. Five is the most fatalities that we've had. Unfortunately, in 2019, we've already had three traffic fatalities within the city limits of Bastrop. And county-wide, we've had 19 fatalities in our whole county, and that's just from January 1 until today. So while I don't have specific information, because distracted driving wasn't a contributing factor that was listed on the crash reports way back in the day, it has made it. It's very hard to write distracted driving unless somebody actually tells you and tells the truth that they were texting, they were fiddling with their radio, as NHTSA used, or doing something else. Normally, what we look at are contributing factors, whereas we failed to yield a right-of-way, we were unable to control speed, failed to maintain a single lane. But I would tell you that in my experience, and the number, I would say, a vast majority of the accidents that we investigate on a reoccurring basis are attributed to some form of distracted driving. Fact is, back in the day, cars have become something just much more than what they were when I was growing up. When I was growing up, they got you from point A to point B. I was the electric window in our car when my dad wanted the window turn, rolled down. He'd look at me and said, "Roll the window down." Now the cars talk to you. They do everything for you. And I will tell you that many of us are guilty of using the car as a secondary office and conducting business when we're on the road. And I was one of those persons that would try to take advantage of the time and use my cellphone and call and thought that I was maximizing my time and having good time management skills. But after reading this and going through these statistics and stuff, I see that I could potentially be the problem in some of these acts. And so it's causing me to reevaluate what I do when I'm behind the wheel. So the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration promulgated some things that we could do to help reduce the level of distracted driving. And they said, "This is what parents could do." The first thing was lead by example. Teach your children what's appropriate when you're in, what's appropriate activity when you're driving in a car and what's not appropriate. Talk to your young drivers about distraction and the responsibilities, the awesome responsibilities that come with operating a motor vehicle. And have everyone in your family potentially sign a written contract that pledged that they would refrain from distracted driving while they were driving. And then NHTSA also said, "There are things that our youth and our students could do." And the things that they talked about is, they said, "Speak up when they see a friend driving while distracted. Peer pressure is awesome. And when you have teens that actually point bad conduct out amongst each other, a lot of times, it's very successful." They said, "Share messages on social media that remind their friends, family, neighbors, not to make the deadly choice to drive distracted. And then one appropriate, if there's one in the community, to become involved in their local Students Against Destructive Decisions chapter." So I thought that these were really pretty neat suggestions that NHTSA had. But here in our own community, we have some trend centers that are youth. And our high school, our youth advisory commission that was appointed by the mayor, our students from Bastrop Independent School District did one, and went even further. And they were the catalyst behind this, and they sent emails to the mayor and petitioned the city council to bring forward this type of legislation that we have. So when we talk about a hands-free ordinance and what that means for the city of Bastrop, we'll go back one more time. And in 2017, the Texas Legislature passed a no texting and driving ordinance, okay? But we were still allowed to talk on our cellphone and be distracted in those types of activities, and also engage with other things, whether it's an MP3 player, a personal, a PDA, a personal assistance device, or any of these other electronics that we see on there. The ordinance that we're proposing to you is that when your vehicle is in motion, the operator of the vehicle cannot use any of these unless it's in a hands-free mode, okay? That's the operator in the vehicle while the vehicle's in motion. If they are found to be doing that, it would be guilty of a misdemeanor with a fine suggested at $300. And that's a break synopsis. The economic impact for the city is going to be that according to the statute and according to the Texas Transportation Code, we'll have to put warning signs at our, in our major state highways entrance into the city, alerting people that are coming into the community that this ordinance is in existence. After talking with Mr. Jobe, we're looking at that cost will be less than $3,000 to put them at the seven major intersections that we have, that number of highways enter into our, into our municipality. I'm available for any questions about the ordinance?
There's one clarification that I want to make. There is a young woman, and she's actually signed up to speak, so you'll meet her in just a minute. But she sent me an email on April 4 as a part of her Generation Citizens team. So that was the class that we were talking about. In addition to Generation Citizen identifying traffic fatalities as something that they would like to see addressed, a different group of students, the Bastrop Youth Advisory Council, passed a resolution asking for this to be put in place. My teenage boys did not ask for rules to be put upon them. So I think these kids are to be commended for recognizing the impact that it makes. For clarification, and council, I'm confident that everybody's read their packet. Before people get freaked out, what this is about, it doesn't mean that you can't use your iTunes on your phone. It doesn't mean that you can't have, we've all got the spots where you can hook the phone to the vent in the car kind of thing. It means you, if you are driving in Bastrop, Texas, and you see someone going down with their phone to their ear or their head down texting, that's not okay. We need drivers to be paying attention to drivers. So the exceptions are, and I'm understanding that correctly, right? You can use it. You just can't have your hand on it when you should be driving.
That's correct. And then there's some exceptions also in there for first responders that are having to use certain types of equipment like that in response in the performance of their duties. And then there's a, there's also a, an exception that allows people that are licensed as ham radio operators to utilize that in the commission of what they're doing. But I'm going to, once again, thank you for bringing that back up. I was just, just completely amazed and proud that our youth came up with this. It was interesting to watch the youth advisory council work forward and draft a resolution. I have a hard time doing a simple proclamation, and they knocked out a resolution out of the park. And it shows that while we're having some problems with mitigating our accidents, it's nice that it's the youth and our future leaders of tomorrow that are taking these steps and have brought this forward.
So I appreciate Chief Alkelt pulling it together. It is our ordinance, and it doesn't mean that we can't make some revisions to it. If we've got questions, now's the time. This is just the first reading of the ordinance. I know that some cities have, like if you're, if you've had your learner's permit, or if you've only been a dri, if you're a certain age. While I think that's a good idea, I feel like that puts, really puts an onus on the police to try to figure out if somebody's 18 or 19 and if they've had their driver's license six months or nine months, because I'm not sure at nine months and one day, it's not still a good idea to not be texting on your phone while you're driving. City Attorney, in the staff report, it was very clear that we are well within our jurisdiction to make the rules stricter than what the state approved, correct?
That's correct. The chief correctly outlined the way the state law is. We're allowed to go beyond that, and several cities have.
Excellent. Thank you, City Attorney. So, Council, do you have any questions? So, Council, do you have any questions for Chief Alkelt? I'm going to, when we're done with that, I'll be calling the students. I have four people signed up to speak on this item. Councilmember Jones?
Two questions. So one is, what is it, what is it that we're proposing that's more stringent than state?
So right now, ma'am, you can drive down the City of Bastrop, and you can talk on your phone to your ear, I can talk it on a speakerphone, I can actually change what music I'm streaming to my play, to my player, I can manipulate my laptop computer if need be. And so that's, that's the stringent part, that we're saying that that type of distracted driving is prejudicial to safely operating your motor vehicle in our community, and that's something that our community chooses not to allow to happen.
State law restricts texting only.
Texting only. Okay, just wanted to be really clear since that was brought up. The other thing is that I really think that, and maybe we have no control over this, but I think the $300 fine is unreasonable. And I would like to see something less than that, you know, maybe closer to $100, because that's, $300 is a huge hit. And I know that it's a big problem, but I think people can learn with a slap, they don't have to get punched down to the ground. And I see that $300 is a little excessive. So I would like to put before us that we consider a lesser amount closer to $100. $100 hurts, but 300 can really put a family behind, so.
So I probably misspoke, and I apologize for that. The way the statute says it's fine not to exceed $300. So the maximum fine for a traffic violation under state law is 500. And what our ordinance says is, is that we cannot, for first offense, we can't go over 300. So it's anywhere from $0 to 300, ma'am.
And it's at the discretion of the judge, not the officer writing the ticket.
And that's our municipal judge, correct?
Yes.
So the folks that we just, we're in, to your point, if it's an isolated first time, never happened, good kid, they could get, write me an essay, 50 bucks, but it cannot exceed $300.
So do we have any sort of, we probably don't have any sort of input or recommendation on that level, do we?
Typically, your prosecutor makes the case, and the judge will factor in, and based on the totality of the situation, as the mayor said, will go from right lines, community service, to whatever the case may be, but that's why you appoint the judges.
So I just wanted to get some clarification, and I got it.
Good question.
Apologize for the confusion.
All right, Council, any questions? Are you ready to hear from some students? All right. Alexandra Rubio, you are up. Alexandra, you get to speak into the mic, and we need you to say your name and your address.
My address?
Yes. Do you know what your address is?
Like my house address?
Your house address, yes.
Okay. My name's Alexandra Rubio.
Got to get closer to the mic, they can't hear you.
My name's Alexandra Rubio, and my house address is 114 Megan Lane, Cedar Creek, Texas. And I came in honor to support the hands-free driving law. And I sent an email to Mayor Connie Schrader, asking if she could pass a stronger hands-free driving law. And what I said was, after doing research, we've decided that we want to advocate for city council to pass a stronger local hands-free driving law. Nationwide, in 2017, 21% of teens in fatal accidents were using their phones. Since the passage of the Texas anti-texting law in 2017, accidents have decreased. But Bastrop can do better. Over 90 Texas cities have already passed stronger hands-free driving laws. For example, in Austin, you can only have your phone in your hand if you are stopped at a stoplight. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Ms. Rubio? Excellent job. Very, very proud of you. Let's have a round of applause for her. Brian Gonzalez.
Before Brian comes up, Mama, did you want to get closer and take a picture?
That's too.
Okay. Okay, all right, just making sure whoever's taking the.
Thank you.
Brian? Come on up. Okay, same thing, say your name and your address.
My name is Brian Gonzalez, I live in.
Make the mic, get up close, yeah, there you go.
My name is Brian Gonzalez, I live in 112 Pine Cove, Bastrop, Texas. And I'm also here to support the hands-free driving ordinance. As my friend stated, over other, over 90 other Texas cities have already passed a stronger law like this. And in Austin, they made it stronger, where you can only use your phone when you're at a stoplight. But San Antonio has gone farther, and they have said you can not at all use your phone. It's been recorded that texting while driving is six times more likely to get you killed than drinking and driving. Nationwide, in 2017, 21% of the teens in fatal accidents were using their phones, showing that many people die while using their phones.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions for Mr. Gonzalez? Let's give him a round of applause. It's a scary thing to do. James Etzel. James, give us your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is James Etzel, and my address is 115 Pheasant Trail in Bastrop, Texas. I have come to speak in favor of this ordinance passing because of our research that we've done. I feel like this research has proven to me that the passing of this ordinance will save many lives.
Thank you very much, James. Let's have a round of applause for James. And Etzel Martinez?
She's not able to make it.
She was not able to make it. All right, Generation Citizen, Colin, can I make all of you guys and Dr. Daughtry come up, and let's take a picture of their group? I think they were pretty impressed. Their email was, gee, would you answer some questions? And I don't think they thought that a month later, they would be getting an ordinance. Yes, Dr. Lee, come join these folks.
Oh, no, I'm taking them.
Okay.
Y'all are moving to the right, moving to the, our right, your left.
All right, good job. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, so much. Okay, Council, so with all of that, if you have further questions?
Actually, I have a question now that they brought it up.
Yes, please.
With the hands-free at the stoplight, whether Austin says you can, San Antonio you can't, exactly what it, now that the public has heard us, we'll make sure that we're clear of what you can do in Bastrop after this.
Our ordinance says while the vehicle is moving, you cannot use it. So if you're stopped at a stoplight or at a stop sign, it is permissible to engage with your phone.
Okay, I just wanted to, since we're talking both ways, we had it clear.
No, that's a great question.
Yes, ma'am.
When the vehicle's in motion. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I move to approve ordinance number 2019-19.
A second.
And place on the agenda for May 28. Consent agenda for a second reading.
Excellent. I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson, I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
I think it's a perfect example of local initiative. Kids brought something up, our professional staff put something together, and this is done in very quick order and done very professional, and I applaud everybody's been involved on this.
Well said, well said. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. It'll be on the consent agenda on May 28. Okay, it's still my meeting, I still get to jump around. I've got one person signed up for citizen comments, so we're going to go to citizen comments. Cheryl Lee. Ms. Lee, if you'll state your name and address.
My name is Cheryl Lee, and my address is 801 Laurel Street. I can never say that right. I want to thank the mayor and council and the city manager for allowing me this time. I want to applaud y'all on what just happened. I think that that was a beautiful way to teach children how to be a part of the community and the decision process. So I was glad, I'm glad I was here to witness that. But I did want to come and provide an update on Delgado Park. It's been a while since I was up here before, but there was a lot of rain, and I was traveling, so this was the soonest I could get up here. And I wanted to start off by thanking Chief Alkelt, he's been wonderful. Like, we have been in constant communication with one another. There was, there was a lot of rain, so we, he and I had talked about getting members of the community together in the park to talk about concerns, but we just couldn't get over the rain. Then one day, it was storming, the day we were going to have it, and we canceled, and by one, the sun was out. We finally got it together, and the weather finally permitted, and we had a few people out. And he did a wonderful job of explaining what the kind of short-term, long-term vision is for the park, addressing safety issues that, or safety concerns that were brought up, answered all of our questions, and it was hot, too, by that afternoon, but he stayed out there and answered all of our questions. So I've seen a huge police presence since, the gates being locked consistently. I've seen a couple of shady things, but I feel safer. I mean, now, they scare me, because I open my back door at night, and I see a car, who's that? And it's them. So I really, I really appreciate the efforts that have been made. I recently went to New York, and I did a tour of Central Park, which I've never done, in all the visits that I've been there. So I actually saw the park in a different way by walking through Central Park. And I've come to appreciate what it could be versus just the playscape, what the city and the community could actually make it into. I actually asked him if we could get a lazy river, that was a no, but we could, we could look at other ideas, like a memory walk for people in the community to buy little bricks, and they can put their family members' names on them. Or there's one area of Central Park where there's a quiet zone, there's no skateboarding in that area, no loud music, just some park benches, and you can lay out. So I got all these ideas before my allergies hit in Central Park, that I would like to continue working with council and Chief Alkelt and Trey and my, my community, to see how we can make this a really beautiful park for our neighborhood. So I just wanted to give y'all an update, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call item 13A next, and Jennifer, giving you fair warning, sorry, Colin, I'm putting you all over the place. We are doing 13A, and council, when our consent agenda is approved, we will no longer be having item 13A. So that's why we're doing this first. This is our last 13A. So I am on page four, under the items for individual consideration. Consider action and approve Resolution number 2019-44 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and exemptions as provided by Emergency Ordinance 2018-1, Section 8, and Emergency Ordinance 2018-2, Section 7. Ms. Bills?
Good evening.
Wait, Council, you had, Matthias, we have one project. Has everyone had an opportunity to review it, or do you need a couple minutes? Councilmember Ennis, are you okay? You want a couple minutes?
I could use a couple of minutes.
Okay, we're going to have a couple minutes.
Okay, Mayor, I'm ready whenever you are.
All right. Ms. Bills, we're good to go.
So we have one item up for consideration tonight. It's a waiver for the location of 437 and 443 Union Chapel Road. This is in our voluntary extraterritorial jurisdiction. This is located out right off of 71 on Union, front Union Chapel Road, though. The site is currently vacant. There had been previously one house there, until recently. They're proposing to do a two-lot replat of the lot in the ETJ. The total lot size of the two lots is 7.404 acres. They're proposing to increase the square footage, impervious square footage of approximately 5,000 square feet currently, which will create an impervious cover increase of 1.6% and a total runoff of 2.6. And the applicant provided a fairly extensive soil analysis and drainage study that shows the entire flow all the way down to Cedar Creek, so.
So staff's recommending?
Yes.
And I am correct that if the new ordinance is approved, this would be an example of something that staff could approve?
Yes.
Council, any questions for Ms. Bills? Move to approve. I have a motion from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll, Rachel, do you want to speak?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Council, and the next time we do that will be very few and far between is the goal. So we are going to go back to the consent agenda, and then I'll do the conditional use permit. So, Madam Secretary, is there anyone on council that wants an item pulled from the consent agenda? Is there anyone in the audience that wants an item pulled from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you will, please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 12A, consider action to approve City Council minutes from the April of 23, 2019, regular meeting, and April 24, 2019, mid-year budget workshop meeting. Item 12B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, enacting Chapter 1, Article 1.20, Sections 1.02, .001 through 1.20, .120 of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, establishing construction and development standards and procedures for assertion, establishment, determination, and recognition of potential grandfathered development status or vested rights claims in providing for the following: findings of fact, enactment, repeal or severability, effective date, codification, proper notice and hearing, popular name, purpose and scope. Item 12C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-14 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Chapter 11 Taxation Section 11.04 Hotel Occupancy Tax, attached as Exhibit A in accordance with Chapter 351 of the Texas Tax Code, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repeal or severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 12D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-15 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, titled Animal Control, Article 2.01, titled. Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, titled Animal Control, Article 2.01, titled General Provisions, Sections 2.01, .001, titled Definitions, amending the definitions of various terms, amending 2.01, .004, titled Restrictions on Keeping Livestock and Fowl, to extend application to fowl being maintained in violation of this section. Article 2.04, titled Impoundment, Division 2, titled Livestock, by requiring Animal Control to refer any impounded livestock to the county sheriff, and repealing specific procedures for impounding livestock, and amending Article 2.07, titled Nuisances, Section 2.07, .001, titled Creating Health Hazard, to extend applicability to animals maintained in violation of this section, and repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict herewith, as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for findings of fact, enactment, effective date, repealer, severability, and proper notice and meeting. Item 12E, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-16 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, repealing Emergency Ordinance 2018-1, temporary moratorium, and implementing enhanced permit review measures to continue a heightened level of evaluation for certain building, construction, and development permits, and providing for legislative findings of fact, repealer, enactment, duration, extension, severability, enforcement, proper notice, and meeting, effective date, applicability, alternate approvals, appeals, and definitions. This concludes the consent agenda.
Could you read that again real quick? I'm just, I'm just teasing, just teasing. Okay, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis. I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda is passed unanimously. Colin, I'm going to 13C for the conditional use permit, and after 13C, I will be going to 13F, so that there's some folks that would like to go home and not hang out with us. 13C, I'm on the bottom of page four. Conduct a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-18 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit to allow a brewery, distillery, and winery use on 0.266 acres of Building Block 4, west of Water Street, located at 919 Main Street, an area zone downtown Bastrop Form Base Code HMS, which stands for Historic Main Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibits A, setting out conditions, including a severability clause, establishing an effective date, and move to include on May 28th, 2019, consent agenda for the second reading. Ms. Bills?
This is a request for the existing 602-on-main restaurant to include a brewery use along with their restaurant use. Within our Form Base Code, this requires a conditional use permit for the actual production of beer, wine, or spirits within the Form Base Code. Their proposal is to build a, or to install a three-barrel system that'll produce up to 90 gallons a cycle, and they intend to brew about 300 gallons per week. The location of this is at 919 Main Street. It'll be separated out from the main restaurant. It'll be in the back, so not accessible to the public without a tour or something. This, it won't be, uh, everything. The, the base zoning district for this area is Historic Main Street, and within the CUP criteria, there are five different categories. One that the use is harmonious, and that it's consistent with the base district, which a brewery is. The only condition that we would kind of add or point out is that it needs to meet our wastewater discharge requirements that are in Chapter 13, because brewing does have the potential to change pHs and have grain discharges, which they're aware of, and they're gonna work, and they've been working through the permitting process with the building department. Planning zoning met on April 25th, then held a public hearing, and recommended approval of the CUP by a vote of eight to zero. This qualifies for an exemption, because there's no impact to the exterior and not in creating a drainage problem. And so staff is, and there were four letters of support that were submitted by the public for this item. And so staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval of the public, of, conduction of a public hearing and approval of the CUP. Any questions?
Thank you.
And the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him.
Councilmember Jones, do you have any questions?
If we visit the brewery, will you give us?
Counsel, any further?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
A second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further conversation, discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Congratulations. It's unanimously approved. It'll be on the consent agenda on the 28th. All right. We are moving to item 13F. I'm in the middle of page five. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2019-46 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to relocate a sewer line near State Highway 71 feeder road expansion to Hership, Backhoe, and ditching in the amount of $136,195, as attached Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. What I have here, if you'll look at the map, is just a location. With the new river bridges that are being built, they're actually gonna be in conflict with the sewer line. So of course, we have to relocate it. We took this out to bid. And while we had a range from 118 to, uh, 278, 960, Mr. Herschapp was the complete bidder at the low bid, and we're recommending that you approve this resolution, so we can get this job started and get this line out of the way, so we can get some river bridges.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Jones?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2019-46 is approved. All right. We're going back in time. We're gonna go to page three. I'm on work sessions and briefings on, on item 9A, update and discussion of current legislative session. I will take just a very quick minute to let everyone know that Senate Bill 2 and House Bill 2 have passed. It, both chambers imposed a 3.5 cap, and it is now in the, they're now in, it's scheduled for a conference committee meeting, and they are working out the details, because other than the 3.5, there is vast differences between the two bills. So they will have to get all of that worked out. One of the most notable differences is that the House Bill 2 requires that House Bill 3 be passed in order to pass House Bill 2, and House Bill 3 is financing for public education. So they, the House has forced them into, they have to resolve public school education before they can address the property taxes. And the current bill is for cities and counties. It does not include school districts. So that's the update of where we are. There's a lot going on. One of the other bills that looks like it is, has passed the Senate, looks like this is going to happen, is House Bill 347, which essentially eliminates unilateral annexations by any city, regardless of population or location. You may recall that in the last session, they were saying it was only for big cities. It was only over 150,000 in population, and this bill says, nobody can do it ever. So I'm sure that city attorney will be bringing us up to speed once the session is closed and we see what's finally passed and how it impacts us. It's one of the advantages of having Mr. Porques and his staff around, because they are well aware of what impacts cities our side, and they'll be keeping us up to speed to make sure that we continue to follow the direction that Austin feels they should share with us. So with that, let's talk about chickens. I'm moving on to item 9B, provide an update on the chicken relocation project in Bastrop, Texas. Chief Algelt?
Good evening. So our update for our chicken relocation project is, I had a conference with our city prosecutor, and we discussed the, the usage of administrative warrants. And at the time when we talked about them, I was under the impression that we could enter somebody's property under an administrative warrant and seize chickens and eradicate them that way. In reality, that, that's not the case. The administrative warrant allows me to go onto the property, and then I can see what I need to see and take action in a different way. So after coordinating with the city attorney's office, what we believe that we're gonna do is, with the passage of the ordinance that you just had the second reading on, when I come to your property, if I can see the chicken from the right-of-way or from public space, I'll ask to come onto your property and, and remove the feral chicken. And if that states no, then you're in violation of the ordinance for harboring the chicken. If you say yes, the problem's resolved, and we go on, and, and we, we capture the chicken and relocate it to a safe place. If they say no, we'll file the charge, and we'll come back the next day, and we'll continue to do so until hopefully we can resolve the problem, or we'll go through a more cumbersome route of obtaining a criminal search warrant.
How much is those tickets?
Explain what file a charge looks like.
So filing the charge would be is that I would file a complaint with the municipal court that says that you're violating our, our, our city ordinance as far as harboring the chickens. It's a, it's a criminal case. You have the right to enter a plea, and you can, if you choose to plead not guilty, then you can have a trial by judge or trial by jury. And it'll go just like any other criminal case, where it will be a, a, um, the burden of proof is beyond a reasonable doubt, and the judge and/or the jury will make that determination if that takes place.
So you're not gonna file one case if they're harboring chickens every day. You will file a new case every day?
That is correct. So it's possible that you may be looking at five charges, 10 charges. It just, it just depends if that's what it's, if that's what you're gonna require us to do, then that is what we are prepared to do.
So it's not a ticket. It's actually, we're filing the charge against you?
I can file the charge by a complaint in the municipal court, or I can issue a ticket. Either way, that's the mechanism that's, that starts the process.
Okay.
But it is considered a criminal complaint?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
What happens if they're guilty? If they're, if the judge finds them guilty, what happens? You know, what's the punishment?
Then it's, it's the range that the, that your judge feel, sees fit. So, yes, ma'am.
Is it an amount not to exceed something?
It's not to exceed $500 unless they find it under the-
Per, per charge?
Per offense, per incident, yes.
That's an expensive chicken.
Or it could be that they may decide, they have also the discretion to work a deal out, where, where they may decide to, to, to dismiss the charge or, or find a different route if they allow us to abate the chickens.
They, and that would be in our municipal court?
That would be in our municipal court, yes.
Councilmember Jones?
If they decided to build a coop in their backyard, and they'd said, "Look, I just, I love that chicken. I want to keep it, and I'm gonna build a coop and take care of it," then that would be allowable.
They become in compliance now. As far as if there were cases filed prior to that, that would be between the city prosecutor and the judge. We, we don't, for the proverbial saying, "We don't have a dog in that fight," ma'am.
So ideally, for any of the public that's listening, if they do have, in the words of Councilmember Jones, a favorite chicken that they would like to protect, they need to start building a coop or buying a coop right away, because if that chicken is in a coop, we won't be having this discussion.
That is absolutely correct.
But that's not for roosters, right? They, it's only chickens they can keep in a coop? Is that, just curious?
Under our current ordinance, they can keep a, they can keep a rooster also.
Oh, okay.
But we will, it's a nice segue for 9C, ma'am.
Okay.
So if you-
Public understands.
Let's say you have a coop in your backyard, and you have three chickens, and you want to let them out to get some sun and eat bugs. That's different than having a feral chicken in your backyard, or not?
I would have to double-check, ma'am, but I think that in the coop, they have to stay in their coop. They're not allowed to roam free.
There are fancy coops that allow them to get out and run, be encased, and eat bugs. The problem is, is when they are not encased, they are considered feral.
But you can put, that's why they, you can put a fence. There's, there's other ways you can do it. People been doing it for years. Yeah. Yeah, that's why it's called chicken wire. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson is helping us out with that. Okay, so counsel, here's the deal. That means if we tell Chief Algelt, "We are on board. Let's rock and roll," your phone could ring next week with a person who is furious because they have a charge filed against them. If your answer is anything except, "I appreciate that you're upset. Counsel voted unanimously, and these are our rules." Now is the time to speak up. Is anybody opposed to the outline that Chief Algelt gave us on how we would move forward?
This is what our citizens have asked us to address, and we're addressing it, so I have no issue.
I was just gonna make comment that the, it's been an issue for quite some time, so it's time we just put into it.
Councilmember Peterson, you all right with rocking and rolling? Councilmember Ennis?
Now that it's become a safety and health issue, I think there is absolutely no other alternative, and I am complete supporter of you, chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jones? All right. Chief Algelt, we're behind ya.
Thank you. So the progress is, we've caught 220 chickens, 84 hens, 66 chicks, 70 roosts, or, excuse me, roosters. May, we've had some weather, and we had our code compliance officer, an animal services officer, along with Chief Nagy, at a week-long code school. So we've only caught eight. I will tell you that the, that the, that the population is starting to diminish, and so we're having to work a little bit harder than we did to catch those, but we will continue our efforts.
Great job. Great update. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 28th.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Now we're on 9C. Receive updated presentation and policy discussion regarding nuisance ordinances and proposed revisions of the Code of Ordinances. I feel a rooster conversation coming on.
Possibly, ma'am. So as per last council meeting, we promised to go back, take a look at the nuisance ordinances, and, and move on from there. And we had scheduled a date on May 1st, and a couple hours in the morning to say, "Let's take a look at the nuisance ordinance, and what we're gonna do, and how are we gonna craft this?" As I mentioned last council meeting, when you do a word search of the word nuisance, it's in 55 different locations. That's throughout 10 different chapters of our 14-chapter code, and 24 different articles, and 43 different sections. We quickly found that what we did not know is what we did not know. And it all of a sudden became a much more, larger task than we had initially anticipated. So we blocked off the remainder of the day, and we went through, and there's some things that we found. Number one is our codes contain a lot of redundancy. The Texas Penal Code is cited throughout our codes, as well as the Texas Transportation Code, the Texas Health and Safety Code, and our International Building Code, or IBC Family Codes, throughout there. So we're asking, well, why is there redundancy? Well, we're not sure, but we'll, we'll talk about that. Some other things that we looked at is all throughout the codes, all 14 chapters. There are different definitions everywhere. There's different methods for due process, for abatement, for civil remedies, and enforcement actions. And what I've been taught, and what, what's good, and I think what our community wants, is they want transparent, open, and easily navigable government. Don't have to go on a scavenger hunt to find out what I gotta do. I shouldn't have to go to 20 different locations and spend a cumulus amounts of hours to try to figure out what's taking place. So we decided that it makes sense to have certain things in one location and only one location. That makes it easy for our citizens to figure out where they need to go. It also makes it easy for us when we have to update our codes. So we decided one location for definitions, for the due process, for the abatement, the civil remedies, and the enforcement actions, like I spoke about. And then we looked at, okay, so how are we gonna categorize our nuisances? We decided we would put them in the following categories. How do they pertain to public safety? How do they pertain to our community values? What is it we're dealing with? Light, with sound, with odor, vibrations, and particulates? When we talked about public safety, we spoke about things such as high weeds and grass, junk vehicles, swimming pools, animals, peddlers and vendors, litter, hazardous materials, everything that you see before you on the PowerPoint slide in your information packet, we deemed as all would fall under the realm of public safety. When we moved on to community values, we talked about things such as animals, kennels, the sale of animals within the city limits, the monopoly of trash removal, loitering, camping in public places, and other things such as curfews. We come under what our community values were. We talked about light. We talked about sound. The roosters could be there as far as animals, construction hours. Motor vehicle speakers, as well as motor vehicle exhaust systems, are constant complaints that we have. And guess what? Even the noon siren came up as far as how loud it is and when it's taking off. I will tell you, I think it's wonderful for nostalgia. I'm just glad that I'm no longer on the night shift, and I don't live a block from the noon siren, because that could be a little perplexing for me if I was trying to sleep during that time. But those are all types of things that we could look at when we talked about sound. We went on to odor. Once again, the chickens could fall under this, but animals, litter, animal carcasses, odors from processing and manufacturing. When we talked about vibration- When we talked about vibrations, we talked about mechanical equipment, construction equipment, and drilling equipment. The goal that we want to do is we want to talk about having our nuisance ordinances adopted prior to the anticipated adoption of the Bastrop Building Block Codes in October. But I wanted to bring this as an illustration to show you that this is the size of our Code of Ordinances right now. And here is the redundancy that we talked about as far as all those other statutes that I talked. On May 2nd, we had a meeting with our city attorney, and we asked, "What is the reason that we would cite the, the city statute or the ordinances that are almost the same as the Transportation Code?" And what the city attorney said is, "If we are going more strict, then we need to, we need to state so in our code. But if we are just following the exact, uh, ordinance, whether it's in the Penal Code or the Transportation Code or the IBC Family, there's no reason that he could see that we would have the redundancy." So by doing this, when I walk in and I say, "What's the city doing?", and I see this code, I think that I've moved into a community that is full of bureaucracy. In reality, when we take out all the codes that we already use, we may have a code that is the size of a binder like this, which would truly make us authentically Bastrop and, and have our own character and charm, and show that a vast majority of what, that what we have to follow is not what the council has passed, but it's what the legislature has passed.
Well, and I think the other thing that I really appreciate about that approach is, um, those folks get together every two years, and that way we can reference something, and we don't have to go back and re-put, push and pull. We can just reference what the existing law is, and I think it's going to make it a lot easier to update our codes. I, I think that was your last slide, wasn't it?
Yes, so between now and, and, and October, we will continue to work. We will be bringing certain things back for, for continued guidance to see in which direction you want us to go, and I'm hoping that the categories that we have broken down and the path that we are is what you all have anticipated or, or in favor or supportive.
Good job. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, well, thank you, chief. I am certainly glad that we're getting away from that old cut-and-paste days that we've been doing for years, and, uh, applaud your work on getting that to where it can be understood and can be implemented.
Totally a team effort. Lots of people in this, sir.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I just want to tell the chief thank you, because twice now I couldn't find the ordinance. I looked, and he just was, was able to find them for me, so it is hard to find anything.
Absolutely.
Figure out which way, my way, to try to find the final answer. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one of those books in my office, too, and I'm telling you, it's not one that's been cracked open a whole lot. And I know we scanned it in, but it's very difficult to find things, and so the new ordinance will be digital from the get-go and logical and easier to search.
And, and, and that's what James referenced. We didn't know what we didn't know until we figured out we didn't know it. Um, when we started going through it, some of us have been at this a long time, and there are things and places I would have never found. Uh, they didn't make sense. There wasn't, there was nothing intuitive about why one would go and look there. Um, so I think that this will really make it easy, and if we just reference state law, we don't need to repeat it. And then, as James said, we can, um, I think, do a better job of staying authentically Bastrop, because there will be no confusion as to what your home rule authority grants you, because it'll be clear. And then if there is an issue, we can determine whether or not we can fix it or not, just by how we represent it.
Councilmember Ennis? Councilmember Jones, any comments?
Just don't legislate, legislate our noon siren out of existence. Took us long enough to get that thing going again. Thanks.
I just, I want to thank Linda, because this is the kind of leadership and experience that you've brought with you, and obviously the people that you've hired to accompany you, and, um, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you, chief. Okay, as mentioned before, um, item 9D was pulled. We were able to complete that during our workshop. So I believe now I'm going to follow in order, Colin. Don't die of shock. We are on 13B at the bottom of page four. Consider action to approve resolution number 2019-45 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming a board and commission appointment of the mayor as required in section 3.08 of the city's charter. Barbara Sparks, uh, was an application that was put forward to me by the existing BAIPP Board. They, um, vetted through three applications and had a group discussion, and they've asked that Barbara be appointed. She lives in the ETJ, but that board's, um, bylaws allow one of the members to live in the ETJ, so I respectfully request your confirmation of my appointment.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
Of a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further conversation or discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. We're moving on to page five, item 13D. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-17 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, enacting a new chapter 16, Stormwater Drainage, of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, establishing stormwater drainage requirements in order to minimize flood risk, stabilize and decrease stream bank and channel erosion, and facilitate comprehensive watershed-based planning and repealing emergency ordinance 2018-2, amendment to the emergency ordinance 2018-2-A, and section 1.40 Drainage Criteria and Design Standards, Article 5.30 Alleyies, Article 5.90 Drainage and Storm Sewers, Section 6.80.3 Roadside Drainage Ditches, Article 6.100 Rural Subdivision Drainage Requirements, and Article 7.5 Drainage from Chapter 10 Subdivisions of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Stormwater Drainage Design Manual, and Establishing an Effective Date. Mr. Joe?
Thank you, mayor and council. Before we get started, um, one, I wanted to, uh, thank the council for the clear policy direction we got on this. We actually, because of your preciseness on this, we actually got to pull this together, and we had a ton of help from outside engineers. Alan and his team worked extra hard, and I know I put a lot of hours in. Our other consulting engineers, um, it's really a team effort, and I'm glad that we're finally here, so now we can start. Um, so really, some of the more significant changes, um, that we're going to talk about tonight is all related to, uh, really those big storm events, if you'll remember, that we had from 2015, uh, till now. Had four significant FEMA events. Um, and at that time, the council put together the, uh, Drainage Moratorium, Emergency Drainage Moratorium on August 23rd. So what that did was slow things down, give us enough time to review and follow the intent of the policy statement that you guys have developed over the past, uh, year while we've been doing this building in Bastrop. And, and we really believe that this stormwater drainage ordinance meets the council's intent for the appropriate drainage, so that it's not detrimental to development. And again, this is just, as we started this journey, um, Atlas 14 information came into play. We've done a 2D analysis on Gill's Branch. So there's a lot better information than we had, and you can, if you remember in the old ordinance or ordinances that we were repealing, uh, there was data from '95, 2004, 2008. It was inconsistent, and it was all over the place. So this is really going to consolidate everything. It's going to be much simpler, like James talked about, with the nuisance ordinance. Um, again, it'll all be in one spot, and it'll really, uh, improve, I think, the overall function of how this is supposed to work. Um, some of the, some of the main goals and purposes here is to minimize the flood risk associated with the land development. Uh, it's also going to facilitate the watershed-based planning, which will, uh, give us a much better review of upstream and downstream. Um, and it's also going to stabilize and decrease stream bank erosion. So if you can, I just had a conversation, for example, at the last, um, building Bastrop workshop with Mr. Long, Mr. Bob Long, I'm sure everybody knows him, he comes and gives the invocation on a regular basis. He talked about Gill's Branch when it originally started on his property, how he could just jump across it, right? And now it's 60 feet wide to 80 feet wide in several spots. So that's what this, by looking at those upstream conditions, that's what this is going to prevent in the future. So it's really a step in the right direction. And again, thanks for the clear direction on the non-detrimental development piece. Um, we, this is some slides from some previous, um, council meetings. You can see, we're, I think everybody's pretty familiar with the changes and the methods that we'll be using. The rainfall data is up to date. Um, we've also, again, really do, really do a lot more to evaluate the upstream and downstream, to protect people from flooding and stream bank erosion. The main thing that I think everybody needs to take away from this is that this is going to be upfront. It's going to be often, and everything's going to be addressed in a, in a, in a timely manner, and it'll be the forefront of everything, where in the past, it was always the last thought. Um, we've received quite a bit of input again from our public, our last transportation and drainage rodeo that we held here at City Hall. Uh, comments received with consulting engineers. I won't go through all of them, because they're three and a half pages, um, but you have that in your packet, and you can see that we have addressed just about every one of them, or added a comment to address them. Um, I think that we've had a great compromise. Um, again, the stormwater drainage ordinance, I believe, again, just meets the intent. Again, I think it's important, uh, the direction that you gave in the past was really helpful to make sure that we were concise in what we were looking for. Um, and I, I think, you know, there's been lots of thank yous and hands shaking and applause all night. Uh, you guys certainly deserve your own round of applause, and then we'll, uh, this truly is significant. I just don't want to, I don't want to stop on this. It's really important. Um, this is a big deal. I mean, you've, you've taken two centuries of data and put it all into one drainage ordinance, where we would just spread it across the last couple, 20, 30 years, and, and it's a mess. Now it's all in one spot. Can be great for development, great for the city, so thank you.
Mayor and council, I, I want to add, and I want to take the exception to one word you used, and I don't think we compromised anything. I think that y'all have been very clear in the direction that you've given, and I think that the engineers that participated understood your mission, um, provided a different perspective on how to look at things, but your purpose statement was abundantly clear. Um, you wanted to ensure that we resolved all detrimental, uh, development, and I'll never forget the, uh, press conference after you issued the, uh, the moratorium, where the mayor talked about, um, we weren't stopping development, but we were going to stop the development that was detrimental to, uh, our neighbors. And that's a pretty clear goal. Um, the other significant thing of this is, is that y'all said at that time, um, this would be a process. And it would be a process because Atlas 14, uh, data was not available in August. Um, so you said, "We need the latest and greatest information." Um, we also knew that we needed to study Gill's Branch for all of the reasons that Pastor Bob Long mentioned. Um, Councilmember Peterson has been very clear that even as close as 10 years ago, uh, we weren't seeing the kind of, of flooding that we're seeing in Gill's Branch. So half and associates did a great, uh, uh, study, modeled, uh, the, the flood, uh, Gill's Branch for us, and gave us some significant information. So in totality, we're no longer studying just people's lot. You know, our current regulation says that, that you got to be net sum, you got to take care of your property. What we're saying now is you got to study things upstream, downstream, study your watershed, and make sure that you're meeting the values, because we said, number one, before we could do anything to address drainage from an infrastructure or a capital investment, we had to get the regulatory piece of this correct. And so I think this ordinance does that. Um, the moratorium process that you put in place, um, incorporate, is incorporated, um, into this ordinance in this respect, and that is, the pre-submission process with staff, um, is, um, incorporated, because we found it worked. It worked great. Not only is staff able to have conversations about drainage, but about the entire development process. And so we're not answering questions that are asked. We're now having total conversation and offering information, maybe before the question is even known they need to ask it. Um, so at the end of the day, as Trey said, this, this represents significant improvements. Um, but to, to use a biblical analogy, Moses didn't bring this off the mountain, and it's not etched in stone. So we're going to put it in place, knowing that it is a significant improvement over where we are, but just like the building codes, we've made a pledge, um, to periodically review it, so it doesn't get stale, and if we see that there are consistent issues, um, there are, um, abilities to fix that, so that we're always keeping your purpose statement front and foremost. So I agree with Trey. We appreciate your leadership and courage on this item.
So I have a couple of things.
Sure.
But not many.
Okay.
Not many at all. This is one of the best documents that you guys have done. We had the drainage, um, rodeo and asked for input, and I was hard on you at the last meeting, because of the way the timing was, it seemed like we'd asked them for input, and then we didn't do anything with that input. The ability to see what their comment was and what the resolution was, to the city manager's point, it wasn't a compromise, it was a, "Yes, that was wrong, and we corrected it," or, "No, we can't do this because of..."
That's correct.
Along those lines, so an excellent document, um, for all future and for your other peers. This is a great way to convey information in a concise manner to council, so A-plus on that.
Absolutely.
One of the comments that they had, and I, I also think it's important that we thank half and associates in CBD, because they were not hired to do this, and they could be the people that sit silently by and then come with all kinds of complaints afterwards, and it was really nice for them to participate in and take their time, because they did it without being compensated. So I appreciate both of those firms participating. One of their comments was, "You guys are being really, really, really strict with Gill's Branch." That's not exactly what they said, but that's what they meant. And the answer is, "We absolutely are."
Yes, absolutely.
And it's because of all the things that we talked about. It is my understanding, and, um, council, I believe we're together on this, that after we fund the three phases of Gill's Branch improvements, if it's appropriate to go back and take another look and make the rules in the Gill's Branch watershed the same for the rest of the watersheds in the city, because Gill's Branch has actually developed and improved to the point that it can handle the water it should be handling, we can always go back and make it less. But we aren't going to flood anyone with, given these stricter restrictions.
That is correct.
So I'm completely, I understand why the comment was made, and I understand why this ordinance addresses it the way that it does, so I'm appreciative of that. And then, because you know how I am, on page five.
Yes.
Paragraph 12.
Number five?
Subsection A, it is, it's completely repeated. It's like three sentences that are duplicated, and I thought I had sent that to y'all, and I may not have, but it is page five of section one, introduction, 12, inundation, and there's a sentence, I think really what you meant was 12, and then you meant to go to A, B, and C, but there's, there's two sentences that are completely duplicated. I think that's considered a typo, and y'all can correct that, but I would just get you to look at that, because I think that's a duplicate.
We can.
I thought I had sent that to you, and I'm sorry if I had.
We will, we will take care of that.
And then my last question, Trey is going to be so happy to know, is not for Trey, it's for Alan. And I am in section four, Stormwater Facility Design Standards, and it's the fact that you have to, um, let downstream property owners know that there is an upstream development that may impact them, and the sentence says, "A letter of acknowledgement shall be obtained from the downstream property owner indicating that the downstream property owner is aware of proposed drainage improvements impacting drainage on or to said owner's property." It used to say they had to sign, and my question was, "Would if they don't sign?" Am I reading this correctly, that what they have to do is, we have to know that they have made them aware? aware? Is that the intent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I just, I didn't want us to get, and I know that they can't go on someone else's property, and if things get really bad, it could turn into an eminent domain that the city would have to do, that a private property owner, I mean, I know it can get complicated quickly, but I just didn't, I wanted to be sure that I was clear that it's a matter of, you have to notify them.
That's the intent of that language, yes.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Any comments from anyone on council? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, just one quick little comment about Pastor Jones said he could jump across Gil's Branch. A quick little story. Think everybody knows where Mill School is?
Yes.
Elementary? It used to be Mill High School. I could leave the corner of Mill High School, get in that ditch beside my house, come all the way back around by the convention center, and go to my uncle's house on Highway ninety-five playing hooky.
Right.
And that ditch was, was deep enough to where we could go from point A to point B without ever being seen. And that's the, yes, and I'm old enough to take it now.
I thought maybe it was your friends that played hooky. That's a great story. Mayor Protim Nelson, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mr. Joe, from a layman's point of view, this is a much more comprehensive and easy read. Thank you. This is a much better product this time than was at our last council meeting. I appreciate it.
I agree.
And in reference to the, to the mayor talking about this document, the fact that y'all argued some of the technical issues and provided a position and maintained your position was really impressive. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Again, it was a team effort. I can't take all the credit.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to second the Mayor Protim's comments. These, these side-by-sides that you did were...
We will use that format in the future.
Great.
And one last thing, and I didn't see it in the deal, but we're going to track changes, right? Are you going to do it in an appendix or a something so that, because we talked about, like, this was the second and final adoption, and then someplace there's going to be a, here's what we changed, why we changed it.
I have them all highlighted.
Okay.
Yes.
But moving forward, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we will.
Because now we're drawing the line in the sand.
That is correct. We will keep a running tab of what's changed.
I just think that'll be a whole lot easier for future councils to know, this is why we changed this, this is because...
Yes.
We're all going to come and go, and it makes it a whole lot easier on the, on the future folks. All right, great job. Anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion from Mayor Protim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And it's also important to recognize that that will, that very motion, the consent agenda before, and with doing this, we're in a good place to not be doing all those thirteen A stuffs as we're moving forward. Yay, good job. Okay, we've already done thirteen E and F, which means we get to go to thirteen G. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty nineteen dash forty-nine at the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city to resolve an enforcement action from the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality at a cost of sixty-six thousand four-hundred-and-twenty dollars. It's attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a appealing clause, and establishing an effective date. City Manager.
Mayor and council, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality sent the City of Bastrop a letter dated April sixteen, twenty nineteen, alleging certain violations of the Texas Water Code and the TCEQ violations or regulations at the wastewater treatment plant located at three hundred Water Street. The alleged violations were discovered during an investigation conducted October third and fourth of twenty eighteen. This letter enclosed a draft settlement agreement that proposed that the city would be assessed and an eighty-three thousand twenty-five dollar administrative penalty, sixteen thousand six hundred and five dollars of which the TCEQ is willing to defer contingent upon the city's timely and satisfactory compliance with all of the terms of this proposed settlement agreement. The alleged violations primarily involved paperwork and reporting requirements with instances of exceedance, primarily of the permitted limits for residual chlorine, which is used as a wastewater disinfectant. Shortly after the October inspection, the city promptly took action to remedy these infractions that it could, to remedy the infractions that we could prior to the TCEQ's issuance of the April sixteen proposed settlement agreement. At all times, the city has been responsible and cooperative with the TCEQ and has striven, striven to satisfactorily comply with the designated timeframes. In fact, in its proposed order, TCEQ has acknowledged that within eight days of the inspection that the city had corrected and returned to full compliance with the first four requirements the TCEQ alleged we had violated. Consequently, the TCEQ has stated that it is willing to defer sixteen thousand six hundred and five dollars of the assessed penalty, which will reduce it to sixty-six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Rather than remit payment to the Texas General Revenue Fund, TCEQ has extended to the city the option of paying an amount equal to the penalty to help fund a supplemental environmental project that TCEQ has approved in order to offset up to one hundred percent of the proposed penalty. Through this program, all funds of the city would have to be paid to the state as a penalty instead of being used in Bastrop County to improve the environment for the benefit of the Bastrop County. So essentially, while this fine is expensive and steep, it certainly will be able to be spent in Bastrop County. I have personally visited with each one of you to help you appreciate the fact that this is a significant violation. It is one that we do not take lightly. We have conducted all of the administrative investigations. We have made appropriate changes and held the appropriate people accountable. We are hiring Joe Jenkins with Walker Partners to conduct some additional quality assurance so that we can make sure not only this process, but other TCEQ project processes are being handled according to not only our internal policy, but TCEQ. And if we find that, that there are changes, then they will be made immediately and retrained. So we appreciate the significance of this. We've been working with our city attorney's office to negotiate the terms of the conditions with TCEQ, and certainly appreciate the fact that they have acknowledged that this was not in malice, and that everything we could do to rectify it as soon as we knew it was a problem has occurred. So it's a very serious situation. We have taken it very seriously, and we'll be working with TCEQ to have some kind of supplemental environmental project in the community that will at least take the money we have to pay and do some things to, to help our community.
Council, any questions for city manager? Mayor Protim Nelson?
I do. Does this, does this action place us as improvement action plan, does it place us in, in any additional scrutiny from TCEQ? Madam, city manager?
No, Mayor Protim, I can answer that one. There's no additional scrutiny because what TCEQ has provided us is a list of acceptable supplemental environmental projects. They've already pre-approved, and we've identified a handful of those that are specific to Bastrop County. And so these are already approved. They're going to be happening with or without us. Our funding helps makes them happen. And so there's no additional scrutiny. And, you know, the, the word is from TCEQ is that the city's, you know, prompt response and thorough response was very well received. And while we do need to go through this enforcement action, because there were some things that could not be fixed, they are, they are favorable to how we've responded, and we have a good relationship with them at this point.
Any other, city manager, this is one of those things where it's absolutely operations, and we look to you for all day-to-day operations, and, you know, the, the chair that you're sitting in, that's where the buck stops. So council appreciates the briefing that you provided, but it is clearly yours to fix and yours to deal with, from, from my perspective for sure. Any other comments? Councilmember Jones?
So my understanding is that this brought up something that really needed to be reviewed, and there's a process in place that, in training, so that something like this never happens again. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. That has happened on the process that we got into violation with, and we have also engaged Joe Jenkins, as I mentioned, to do a thorough process review. Joe will come in and shadow all of our processes over a course of a two-day period of time. And by shadowing, we will be able to determine whether or not our internal protocol is indeed being followed. And if it is being followed, does it meet TCEQ standards the way we think that it should? If he finds any issues in those reviews, then he will either fix our standard operating procedure and train, or retrain to make sure we're doing exactly what we should be doing. So we've done all the things that we believe to be reasonable and prudent to ensure this doesn't happen again.
Council, a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. A motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-nine is approved. We're on the last individual consideration item, thirteen H. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty nineteen dash fifty of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, supporting the co-application by the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County of an ED nine hundred P Proposal for Economic Development Administration Assistance Grant, requesting funding to build Bastrop Community Center and Shelter Facility at Mayfest Park, ratifying the signature of the city manager on the co-application and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documentation, establishing an effective date. City manager?
Mayor and council, you are aware that the city has filed its own grant to request to the EDA for Agnes Lane. The county, their project that they submitted was the Bastrop Community Center and Shelter Park. Y'all have already approved a seventy-five-year lease with the county for this building. Just like the Agnes project, the EDA staff goes through and does their due diligence on the application. And it was determined by EDA that because the City of Bastrop owns the property, that it was not good enough for us to just support the property, support the project, which is how we initially proposed it. The mayor talked to EDA staff, helped them understand, absolutely, we've got a lease, everything was great. Well, they have notified the mayor that they wanted us to be co-applicants. And as with all things with this grant, they're on a very tight timeline. So I executed the grant to meet all of the time deadlines based on the fact that you had already executed the seventy-five-year lease. And we can all agree that the community center shelter facility is critical to our emergency management ability to shelter folks. So what you are essentially doing by adopting this resolution is ratifying my signature on that grant, and then authorizing me to continue to execute all necessary documentation in hopes that the county can get three-point-three million dollars, because their application was for three million, three hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars in order to build this shelter. We have met with County Judge Paul Poppy, Commissioner Clara Beckett, and the county engineer Carolyn Deal, the mayor, myself, and Chief Aunt Gelt, who is our management, emergency management coordinator, has met with them. And we wholeheartedly support their project, hope that we are successful collaboratively in getting this money, and I would ask for your support on this resolution.
Council, I want to share with you that I was contacted by staff with the EDA asking for us to be a co-applicant, and I had the, while we're supportive of it, if there's only one project that's going to be approved, it needs to be Agnes. And I was assured that the, they awarded multiple projects within a jurisdiction. If you think about it from an emergency basis, you know, when a hurricane hits, there would be a number of projects in one particular county. So she was very, very clear that we were not impacting our ability to not get Agnes funded. And that was why I had the conversation with the city manager, and based on past discussions, was very supportive of her signing those documents. And with a motion tonight, she stated it's merely ratifying the action that she's taken.
So may I ask a quick question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, because it's been a while since we've talked about this, how will that building be used? Will we have access to it? Is there, you know, I think I remember hearing, anyway, go ahead if you would just talk about that.
It is a county facility. It will be owned and managed by the county. The county is putting together the matching funds. It will be located at Mayfest Park. The primary function will be a shelter. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a hundred or a hundred and fifty beds, where we're fifty.
Yeah, I think so. And it will house agri-life, is who they're going to move over there.
So it's, it is, it's either two or three times the size of our sheltering facility. And currently, Smithfield has a shelter for fifty, we have a shelter for fifty, and Elgin has a shelter for fifty. So this partnership with the county, getting their facility up is critically important so that if we were to have a major event, we've got enough beds.
But other than the lease, we don't have any jurisdiction over the facility.
I just remember initially there being some talk about it being able to be used as part of, when we had rodeo and stuff like that, that there would be the ability to have some involvement.
You need to have a conversation with Paul Poppy and Commissioners Court.
So there, there's no cooperation on that whatsoever, but it's...
We're not saying they won't cooperate. We're saying our only role in this is the lease that we gave them. It's their building, their funds, and how, how and what you can use the building for has restrictions based on where they're getting their funding, and it's a conversation y'all to have with them.
But it's going to be housing agri-life. Is that what you're saying?
That personnel.
There, there are two external facilities that assist the county with county functions, and they are providing housing for those community partners that provide county functions in that building. And I do know that that's one of them, and I can't remember what the other one was.
Any further questions or comments?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. We are now moving into the executive session. We will be discussing two items tonight. Item fourteen A, City Council shall convene and to close the executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one of the Texas Government Code to discuss and deliberate litigation matters with the city attorney regarding possible litigation regarding Davenport Dayton Drainage. Fourteen B, City Council shall convene and to close the executive session pursuant to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one of the Texas Government Code to discuss and deliberate litigation matters with the city attorney regarding Bastrop Estates LLC versus the City of Bastrop, Texas, and Linda Umble. It is nine oh eight, and we are in executive session.